Good evening. The April 25th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Braithwaite, Councilmember Nguyen, Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Suffertin. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Here.
Mayor Bis.
Thank you there. Nine, no. There are six members answering the call of the roll, plus please add Councilmember Kelly to the roll. That makes seven. We have a quorum here and are prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on our agenda is the Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations, of which I have four, a very diverse collection of things to discuss. So I hope you'll indulge the dramatic change in topic from item to item. So first of all, I wanted to announce, in keeping with our Earth Day theme of much of the evening, a resolution for Arbor Day 2022, which reads as follows: Whereas trees are a resource that improve the quality of life of community members, help to mitigate against some of the impacts of climate change, improve air quality, and help to reduce energy consumption; and whereas trees are a critical part of this ecosystem and provide native habitat for wildlife; and whereas an ongoing collaboration between community members and the city to work towards a healthier urban forest that contributes to a more resilient community is a benefit to all people in the city, the region, and beyond; and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and is now observed throughout the nation and the world; and whereas Arbor Day is celebrated in Illinois on the last Friday of April; and whereas Evanston has been a tree city USA since 1985 and has only increased its commitments to trees and other green infrastructure, now therefore I, Daniel Bis, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the last Friday of April 2022 as Arbor Day in the City of Evanston, and urge all community members to support efforts to protect our trees, to support our city's urban forestry program, to participate in activities related to Arbor Day, and plant trees to promote the well-being of present and future generations. So that is the first item. The next item is an announcement that we only get to make once every 10 years, or less frequently, as the case may be. Because of the census that occurred under the U.S. Constitution, the city will be redrawing its ward maps, and the first meeting of the Redistricting Committee will be held in two weeks, on Tuesday, May 10th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Civic Center in Room 2404 around the corner. For more information, please reach out to Councilmember Nusma, who will be chairing the committee. The next item is a very somber one, and I regret to inform you that we lost a staff member last week. Adam Abayian, who was in charge of our lakefront for many years, was a young man with a family, passed away last week. And I want to say two things. First of all, of course, it's just a tragic loss, and we extend every sympathy and all of our love to his family and his loved ones and those he left behind. But I just also want to add that, as somebody who had the responsibility of hearing from people who were harmed on our lakefront a lot in the course of the last year, people who had a lot of grievances and a lot of concerns, one continued message I heard from them was that Adam was their ally, Adam was their supporter. And I think the whole city owes him a debt of gratitude for that, and as we mourn his passing, I just wanted to share that with the community as well. It's a terrible, tragic loss, and one that leaves a hole in a lot of people's hearts. The last item I wanted to mention today is that I just had the extraordinarily, extraordinary privilege upstairs in the parasol room of participating in a dinner that was held in conjunction with the initial round of reparations funds that have been allocated of the 16 ancestors who were recipients of those funds, who were selected through a process we've talked about in the past. Nearly all were able to join us. It was a powerful, historic, and moving, moving experience, one in which I think all of us in the room, while recognizing the historic occasion that we were a part of, also recognized that a single financial contribution is a small part of the reparatory work that needs to be done and that we're committing to do, that we make these allocations of funding as a recognition of how much more work we have to do thereafter, but also as a recognition that it's simply not acceptable any longer to wait to take that first tangible step. So there's a lot of people to thank for this, and I think we're going to hear from some folks about this when public comment comes, but definitely especially want to thank our staff, who did so much to make this day come to pass, the seven members of the Reparations Committee, three on the City Council, four not, Councilmember, former Councilmember Robin Ru Simmons, and Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste, who was there this evening, and many more. So this work continues. There's lots more that lies ahead, but today was an important milestone along that path. That concludes my announcements, and next is the City Manager's Public Announcements.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, members of City Council. I too want to echo your sentiments of our sympathy extended to the family of Adam Abayian. Adam was a very hard worker, very dedicated to the Parks and Recreation Department for many years, and he will be missed by many. He's leaving our hearts a little fuller for the work that he has done, and we know that his legacy will live on in the tremendous work that he did on our lakefront and with our young people. So I want to extend our condolences to his family on behalf of our staff. Thank you.
Next is Communications from the City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Just two quick items. There was some signatures received for a petition in support of a climate emergency resolution, which was forwarded to the Council by Clerk Mendoza, and then there was also public comment in support of the varsity theory that was received and forwarded onto City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to public comment this evening. Each public commenter will be given three minutes. We'll begin, as always, with those who signed up in person to speak in person. As we can all see by looking around, there are more such speakers than we've had in recent months, and we're thrilled to see so many people here and appreciative of your engagement here in person. The first speaker will be Foster Pratt.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Foster Pratt, and I'm a 16-year-old sophomore at ETHS. I want to have a livable future. This line was among the testimonies written by high school attendees of ETHS's first Climate Justice Conference last Wednesday. I'm here to read some of those testimonials to you tonight. Students mainly discussed the consequences of effective CARP implementation and today's climate emergency resolution. "Make sure you are holding businesses accountable for their carbon emissions," wrote one attendee, "calling special attention to the need to prioritize buildings that are our highest carbon emitters." Another student noted the need for better messaging and accessibility of information for youth, writing, "I feel like people my age are not internalizing this as a serious issue. Education is key." Health was another issue commonly brought to light, with one student writing, "CARP would allow for the children of Evanston to experience a higher quality of life. These actions would also decrease the serious health issues that show up in children at a young age." Students also urged local officials to expand the Office of Sustainability, as none of these goals can be effectively addressed without adequate staffing. Evanston cannot make the changes we need to if the Office of Sustainability does not have enough employees. Finally, we're just scared. I mean, one student wrote, "I am terrified for our future. I'm terrified of irreparable damage and lives lost to climate change, and I'm terrified of being complacent." We are calling on you to use the power you hold to make a change in Evanston's priorities. Follow through on the actions prescribed by today's climate emergency resolution and CARP action agenda. Before you know it, those actions will no longer be relevant, so the time for action is now. Thank you.
The next speaker is Emmett Ebbels-Duggan.
My name is Emmett Ebbels-Duggan. I'm a junior at ETHS and a Ward Four resident. We've heard it a thousand times: the youngest generations and those still being born will bear the heaviest brunt of the climate crisis impacts that are already affecting the world now. The Council is poised to pass a potentially transformative resolution today, so I want to discuss the role of both government and young people in what comes next. Minors are excluded from the voting constituency. Thus, our impact in the democratic process outside the institution of voting is uniquely valuable, as this is our only opportunity to have our interests represented by ourselves. The resolution represents exactly how this kind of democracy should work. It largely originated with youth activists, was picked up by those in power, and moved along through the support from intergenerational civic activists. But the democratic process doesn't stop there. When resolutions pass, it's up to city government to implement them with ordinances and other concrete policy changes. Small municipal governments like ours are uniquely able to incorporate constituents' input into their considerations to a high degree. The combination of this and young people's role in the democratic process provides a framework to move forward. City government must continue to work with the community as the city takes steps towards concrete implementation, and pay special attention to communication with young leaders. This communication goes both ways. City government must do better to actively make information accessible to ordinary citizens, while we work within our networks to get the best representation for our interests. The tone at the conference workshop where students wrote those testimonials was frustrated but optimistic. We know that the climate emergency resolution and CARP action agenda is a huge step forward and are hopeful about its promise for the future of the city. Please capitalize on the momentum that today's agenda items provide to quickly implement concrete transformative policy. Proactively communicate and work with the city's intergenerational leaders to craft and publicize this legislation. We know that the resolution holds incredible promise, especially for those who are the victims of environmental injustice. It provides a vision for a better future for all in Evanston as the youngest generations age. It firmly solidifies Evanston as a leader in local climate policy nationwide. Following through on the climate emergency resolution and CARP action agenda will lift our community up. Don't let us down.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jerry Garl.
Thank you, Mayor Bis and City Clerk, interim City Manager, and members of Council. I'm Jerry Garl. I live in the Eighth Ward, and I'm the Chair of the CARP Implementation Task Force, which is a subcommittee of the Evanston Environment Board. I'm here to ask for your immediate and unanimous approval of the resolution to declare a climate emergency and its action agenda. Many of Evanston's most difficult intersecting issues are based in inequity, and these are exacerbated by climate change, including the ability to recover from more frequent and severe storms and heavy rainfall, deal with food scarcity, increase costs and supply chain disruptions, escape the health effects of extreme heat and increased air pollution, paying higher utility bills, live in neighborhoods with reduced access to public transportation and walkability, and experience the confounding sense that city services aren't being delivered or responded to equitably. This must change. The role of our next city manager is critical: to request adequate resources, create more transparency with accountability for action, and establish strong community engagement that includes many voices that are not traditionally heard. Please support that role tonight by adopting the resolution and the action agenda.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rachel Rosner.
Hello, I'm Rachel Rosner. I'm a resident of the Ninth Ward. Welcome. And a lifelong Evanstonian and the Board President of Citizens Greener Evanston. I also work for a youth climate advocacy program called It's Our Future, and had the privilege of attending the U.N. Climate Conference, COP26, where I met leaders from nations on the front lines of this crisis: nations suffering from severe and prolonged drought and famine now, nations suffering, nations that are losing their homes and their cultures to sea level rise now, nations in the global south populated by people of color. As a parent and in my work with youth leaders, I'm acutely aware that our kids are carrying a heavy mantle of our making. By declaring a climate emergency and behaving accordingly, you will show them that adults are responding appropriately to the magnitude of this crisis. You will also be joining over 2,000 jurisdictions in 38 countries representing over 3 billion people that have already declared climate emergencies. This is a big night for Evanston. Please stand if you are here in support of passing a climate emergency declaration. Thank you. I want to assure you that you have broad support in prioritizing climate justice at this critically urgent time, and thank you in advance for what I hope will be unanimous support. Evanston can and must be a climate justice leader locally, nationally, and globally. It's their future.
Thank you. The next speaker is Elizabeth Kinney.
Mayor Bis and members of the City Council. I am Elizabeth Kinney, a resident of Evanston and Climate Action Chair for the League of Women Voters of Evanston. The League has found that climate change is a serious threat facing our nation and our planet. The League believes that an integrated approach to combating climate change includes energy concentration, air pollution controls, building resilience, and promotion of renewable resources that are necessary to protect public health and defend the overall integrity of the global ecosystem. I am here tonight to express the League's strong support for the proposed climate emergency resolution. It is time for the city to put teeth into the commitments it made in the Climate Action and Resilience Plan of 2018. In this regard, it is important that the city lead by example, particularly in view of the difficult choices that we face. While the city deserves credit for developing proposed revisions in the building codes to promote energy efficiency and for obtaining about a 30% reduction in municipal greenhouse gas emissions, we are running out of time to avoid the irreversible impact of climate change. A sense of urgency is needed in every decision that the city makes. Adopting the CARP action agenda, which is attached to this resolution, will, if followed, significantly help the city reach its CARP goals, goals that are necessary for us to do our part to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, help reduce global warming, and ensure a just and sustainable, resilient, and healthy future for the generations to come.
Thank you. The next speaker is Betty Bog.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Betty Bog. I'm the Executive Director of Connections for the Homeless. I'm coming to you tonight because mistruths about the work of Connections are being asserted in public meetings such as this one. I've been counseled not to be overly defensive, and I'm working on that, but as a steward of this agency, I need to address the comments. First, opponents are reporting a huge uptick in crime at the Margarita. Connections tracks all incidents that occur at our sites. We are in the process of analyzing our own incident reports and data and comparing them to available policing data so that we can have a conversation with a shared set of facts that we all believe are true. We hope to compare our results, our reports, to Evanston police reports, and are scheduling a meeting with the Mayor, Councilmember Nusma, and Chief Eddington for mid-May to review those results. What I can confidently say is that from January 1st of 2022 till today, April, well, sorry, whatever day today is, our records show two incidents requiring a police response. One was a brief misunderstanding between roommates that was peacefully resolved with no charges filed. The second was an incident in which our staff called for assistance when a non-resident was seeking access to the property and refused to leave. I have also heard it stated that we lack services at the Margarita. In fact, we provide rich wraparound services through professionally licensed staff, trained residential workers, and partnerships with multiple community providers. In addition to case management, our services include onsite physical and mental health care via licensed nursing staff and a mental health professional who provides individual and group therapy. We also offer substance use disorder support, employment counseling, and many additional supportive services. As always, I welcome the opportunity to discuss Connections work at any time with any community member, excluding members of this council, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Claire McFarlane-Barber.
Good evening again, Mayor Bis, Council members, and City Managers. My name is Claire McFarlane-Barber. I am a resident of the Third Ward of Evanston, and I'm a member of the Evanston Reparations Committee. As Mayor Bis mentioned, we just had the honor of a dinner celebrating and sharing time with the initial recipients of Evanston's housing redress program. They were the first recipients of tangible reparation remedies for African-Americans in Evanston and indeed in the entire United States. What a historic moment. A lot was made about the history of the moment, but I urge the Committee, the Council, to continue its work and continue to keep this an urgent priority, because in sharing that time with them, we are, we're reminded that behind these historical moments are individuals, are individuals with very personal stories, and they are the living history of our Evanston community. And we can't fail to honor their very personal journeys that they've taken us on. In those discussions with them and speaking with them, honoring them, they represented a larger group, and we are still working with ancestors, descendants in this program and programs to come. This is just the beginning. But it was important to speak with them and to spend that time with them and remember that these first historical 16, and their names I hope will be remembered like we know the names of the Little Rock Nine in Arkansas who integrated the school system, or first voters after the 1965 Voting Rights Act enabled so many to come forward and vote when they hadn't before. The individual interactions remind us that behind the pain and the progress of so many communities stand real individuals with distinct and personal stories. These individuals didn't win a prize, they didn't get a gift. Evanston instead began the journey of long overdue redress for these past wrongs. The distributions that we were celebrating were not in any way complete repair for the harm that they suffered, their families suffered, or our wider community suffers. So much more is owed. Instead, we were saying, it was a beginning of saying thank you to them for participating in the progress, in this process. Without them participating, without them applying and accepting their distributions, we would not be able to begin the healing process that Evanston's able to experience by them saying yes to the process and by them accepting these things. So we thank them, and we urge the Council to continue to support programs that support them. The city made a historical step, and we're very proud of the step that we've been able to take and the value that expresses to our community. It was just the beginning, and we have to continue. We have to put our efforts behind, continue the work, continue the hard work and the effort, and acknowledge the valuable contributions that each of those people made. They seem everyday, ordinary people. We've had members of our African-American community that are quite historic, our Lorraine Morton Center that we sit here, in which we sit today. But there are many unsung heroes, and those people stayed here in difficult times, in times when this city made it a very difficult and unwelcoming place, and they established our Black community. Without them, we would not be able to have the diverse Evanston that we're so very proud of. So we owe them thanks, and we also owe them our efforts and continued energy to make this program of reparations successful. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Don Dirks.
Mayor Bis, members of the City Council, interim City Manager, and City Clerk. My name is Don Dirkes. I live in the Fourth Ward, approximate to the Margarita Inn. And our neighborhood has serious doubts about this experiment at the Margarita Inn. It's a very high-stress situation, especially for those who've experienced firsthand what this continues to do to our neighborhood. In fact, there was a call just this afternoon at the Margarita Inn, and there were four squad cars there. Nothing serious, I don't think, but I don't know what the details were. We're not complaining about losing our view of the lakefront here. This is, let's be clear. We are worried that Connections can properly manage the shelter and provide the services needed. You may not want to admit it, but this could easily become the next Albany Care if not properly controlled. The neighborhood has changed for the worse. Homes from outside Evanston are attracted to the center even if they don't live there. We see public urination, aggressive and sometimes extreme behaviors. Let's look at the numbers, and these numbers, by the way, are from the city, from the Fire and Police Department. From 2018 to 2020, the Margarita Inn had 24 police and fire and EMT calls, 12 a year to that building. That's our baseline. Now, from 2020 to 2022, there were 261 calls to the Connections homeless shelter. That's an astounding increase of 10x to a single building in Evanston. This might have been attributed to the COVID emergency. Well, if you take away the calls just to that one building, the calls to the block itself actually decreased. It was an unusual time. Perhaps things got better from year one to year two. They didn't. They got dramatically worse. In fact, 57% worse. And I'd be happy to share these data with anybody. So we think that more needs to be done. This is Evanston. We can do better. Anything less, and you could be responsible for building another Albany Care. We're not convinced that the controls currently in place are adequate, quite frankly. So if this stays as a homeless shelter, it needs to be zoned as a homeless shelter, not a rooming house. That's all we're saying. It needs to be zoned properly, and needs to establish the necessary oversights, controls, regulations for proper 24/7 professional staffing, safety, monitoring. Otherwise, you're simply allowing for a human warehouse. Again, this is not a rooming house, and to pretend, and to pretend otherwise is incorrect. Simply shouldn't outsource us to a Connections organization. As well-meaning as they are, the evidence indicates they can't manage this facility. So if you don't do this right, you may be doing it wrong again for a very long time. So I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. We now move to that rare category of people who signed up online to speak in person, beginning with Clerk McCarthy. If Clerk McCarthy isn't here to speak in person, we'll move on to Tricia Conley.
Good evening. I'm Tricia Conley from the Fourth Ward. I realize you all have a lot before you tonight, and so do the residents. Since this is the case, I have a few items I'd like to address that aren't on the agenda, but it does deserve amplifying due to the nature of it. I'm speaking of the Board of Ethics. The Board has not met for far too long, and now it will be structured differently. It is concerning that the first meeting of the Board will be held at 1:00 p.m. on Wednesday, May 11th. This deserves explanation as this clearly negates having wider public participation on matters of ethics that have been on hold for far too long. Please change the time to evening hours, and if it needs to be... Please change the time to evening hours, and if it needs to be, do a hybrid meeting. The goal, if our goal as a city is more transparency, then this would be about meeting that goal. In addition, in connection to CARP and climate justice, I did notice that we're going to spend some money on some trees. That's great. Where is our tree ordinance? What happened to it? Let's get some traction on that, please. On the agenda item that I'm speaking to tonight, it's H1, amending portions of the City Code about noises prohibited. And I suppose there was reasoning for this ordinance backed by good intentions about nuisance and so on, but I have some concerns about it. In essence, this ordinance says that any reproduction of sounds in a manner as to be louder than 55 decibels at a distance of 750 feet from the property line of the premises from which the sound is being generated would be subject to a fine. So with that in mind, there's several places one can look online to figure out, what is that exactly 55 decibels, or what is it similar to? Well, a household refrigerator runs at about that. Normal conversation is actually, could be higher, 60 to 70, and a business office could be somewhere between 60 and 65. City traffic can go up to 85. Now, this is all relational in terms of how long and how bothersome it can get. I get it.
15 seconds.
But I really want us to think about as a community, what are we after here and who are we after? Northwestern is exempt, Space is exempt, they make the longest, loudest noises of anyone. And don't get me wrong, I love music, I go to the Space concerts. But, you know, this is something that we have to consider in terms of the public, community being neighborly, and the chance of, you know, perhaps people telling on each other. Like, how does that build community? We don't need to do that.
Very much.
We don't need to find, let's be equitable here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the online speakers, who will begin with Mike Vasilko, followed by Sarah Feeberg, and then Tina Payden.
Thank you very much. A couple of quick things. First, I want to throw my complete support behind the CARP effort. I feel this is finally getting traction at the council and in our community, and it should be a nonstop motivation to keep moving quickly and as accurately as possible. The only thing I would say, and it's really not a negative, because I know everyone's trying to be proactive about this, but on one of the documents, page nine, it talks about municipal operations and how in 2020, we were 100% renewable electricity for municipal operations with a checkmark, meaning we're done with that. I think that's misleading, it needs a lot of explanation. I know what you're trying to say, but I think it's overanxious to show, I think it's stated in an overanxious way to show progress where we have a lot of work to do in that category. So I don't see it as done, but in general, I couldn't support this more. Just briefly, also, I'd like to have somebody at the council explain item F1 in much more detail. There's a lot of cost. We're kind of rebuilding, you know, the 2021 budget, adding $11,554, I'm sorry, $11,554,473 of expenses, many of which should be handled. I mean, we now have ARPA funds that should be applied to some of these things. There are service areas that are overspending. There's a lot of overspending, credit card fees. I just think this, before it's approved, and maybe it should be held, but before it's approved, it should be explained in much greater detail to the citizens. Lastly, I have to jump back to something that took place at the APW meeting. We were talking about an expenditure on the bills list, $17,000 to the architect of the Robert Crown Center, and it was stated that that's probably the final payment to that group, and that's why it's coming in so late. Okay, that's fine, but then it was stated by the city engineer that, oh, by the way, all those cracks on the first floor of Robert Crown, those are normal, she said. That's to be expected, she said.
15 seconds.
I just have to tell you unequivocally, that is so misleading, and to say that no one else is responsible for those things, that should have been taken care of by the contractor, by the architect, by the engineer, by their liability insurance to correct that. So you've been misled, and you continue to be misled, and I understand that a lot of people on the council don't have construction experience, and that's okay.
Time.
But you've got to get a second opinion on this matter. That expenditure, if it's their last payment to the architect, should be held until you get a second opinion on how they're going to fix that cracking that is dangerous. Someone is going to start to be tripping on those things. You can't cover them up with tables all the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, but please, hold that payment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sarah Feeberg, who will be followed by Tina Payden, and then Dorian Price.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bis and members of the City Council. I'm Sarah Feeberg. I live in the 3rd Ward. I'm representing myself, and I'm also representing St. Nicholas Parish, 806 Ridge Peace and Justice Committee. We're very thrilled with Evanston's action on climate control and carbon emission reduction. So I'm specifically backing Resolution 32R22, declaring a climate of urgency and immediate mobilization. The people who are getting hit with this worst are the people who are not causing it and the people who are suffering the most. People were, climate has changed so badly that their habitat is disappearing under the water, and the heat is such that they can't live in it. This is an issue that all of us in the human family share. If we don't do something, our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids will have to live with the results of our decisions. So I know this is recommended to be passed, I'm probably preaching to the choir, but I felt really that I had to say my piece, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tina Payden, who will be followed by Dorian Price, and then Carlos Sutton.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. I would like to first talk about A5. You're talking about, I believe, $75,000 for 216 new trees. Where will these trees be planted? Unfortunately, the city is doing a poor job with tree maintenance. Do not plant more trees when you are not taking care of the current trees. I believe at APW, the gentleman said they lose 30% of the trees, probably because you're not taking care of them. You say you do not have enough staff to maintain them, then don't plant anymore. Where are you planting them? In the 5th Ward, where the lady cut down 40-plus trees, many large ones, on Emerson and Jackson? People can't water the trees on the parkway because it costs too much. Are you giving someone a break on their water bill when they're watering the trees that the city is responsible? The tracks here by my house has a lot of dead trees, and you don't do anything with them, and they look very bad, right behind, truly, off of East Railroad and on the other side of Ridge. I would also like to talk about A23. It's for action tonight at City Council. These changes are very serious with the housing rules. This should have been discussed in the Housing Subcommittee before it was for action. I object to several items in this ordinance, and it needs to be referred back in committee and discussed with the public and the owners and managers of the property. There was no notification about these changes. I also object to notification of new rules and codes stating that it will be notified via email, excuse me, or the city website. It should have formal notification, just like we talked about with registration and licensing. The Subcommittee has been talking about this for a long time. When it was discussed and suggested by me and others that we need to focus on improving the inspection process, not one time did Ms. Schnur state that these changes were coming up. Again, this needs to be referred back into the committee for discussion and properly noticed to people that it will affect, the tenants, owners, and managers of property. Yesterday, I would also like to say that Mayor Bis and former alderman Rue Simmons appeared at Temple Jeremiah and made a case for reparations. I would like to know, Mayor Bis, you said that your mom received reparations. I would like to know, how much did your mom receive in reparations? And was it cash payment? Why the Black Evanston here cannot receive cash payment, when I'm sure your mom's was cash payment? And do you still receive cash? Does she still receive payments at this time? It seems like it's very unfair here in Evanston, games as usual. Black lives matter all the time, not sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dorian Price, followed by Carlos Sutton.
Hello, Mayor Bis and City Council. Can I start after Carlos, please?
If that's okay with him.
I need a moment. Can I start after Carlos?
If that's okay with Mr. Sutton, he's welcome to go first. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Dorian. Thank you for this opportunity to give comments to the City Council. I want to commend Mayor Bis, I want to commend the city manager and the clerk for the action that they're taking toward reparations. Happy Arbor Day to the city of Evanston. Evanston was once designated the city of trees. I'm glad to see the planting of trees, especially elm trees, not those ugly Kentucky coffee trees that were a hideous sight in my community. Also, I would like to acknowledge a significant accomplishment that occurred today. The first appearance of the 16 people who received recognition through reparations. Today is not the end of systematic racism in our city, but it is indicative of a progressive town that has given our country, one, from right here in Evanston, Amendment 19, the prohibition, even though it was repealed, and later, we know now that we also want to acknowledge the recipients for filling out the forms and participating in this reparation distribution. This is historical. Not sufficient enough to roll back the current movement in our country, to excavate our differences and to enlarge our divisions. The longest journey begins with a single step. Thank you, city officials, for being the only city in America that has acknowledged and addressed the harms to our citizens. May this movement expand beyond the borders of Evanston to other communities in our country, eventually with the passing of House Resolution Number 40. Thank you. I commend you and support you in your efforts to bring equity to this city, even though the timely meeting does not provide for full participation. Also, I will want to amend you for passing the climate urgency legislation. I oppose the passing of A23 for the remarks already given by Tina Payden, but not sufficient notification to landlords. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Now we go back to Dorian Price.
Hello, Mayor Bis and the City Council. I definitely, as an advocate, support Green Evanston, environmental justice, the Environmental Board, all those organizations who are fighting for our climate. But the climate is an issue with regard to our humanity shared with and enriched by having nature around us, and to the extent that we can reverse that is huge, and just trying to keep even is huge. And there's efforts that are being generated and trying new and different things. I would very much like the city encourage residents to participate in these newer approaches to greening their properties, including trees or using endogenous plants, and plants that will take over, the old plants or the old grass, in ways that we're still learning together and not have people tell on each other because the other person's in the process of trying something that they are legitimately engaged in. And so the city of Evanston partnering and not traumatizing residents by enforcing codes because some people are not socially or economic, or green aware, as a green is ware, which everyone will be, and a good thing would be if someone complains, turns around, and understands something they didn't before. That's what the city can do to partner. So I encourage the city of Evanston to take more active, truly engaged, even if our interim city manager goes walking around and encouraging people in terms of their efforts. That would be huge in terms of a culture change and listening to the residents and what they have to say, both pro and con. And then the last thing is the green infrastructure. I see there's some sort of hydraulic and hydrologic study that's underway. Could you please explain that further? That can assist current residents who, as Jonathan well knows, that in terms of economic and social justice, that there are issues with regard to people in a dangerous situation or flooding, getting impacted disproportionately, and that can be abated by some of the programs, again, that Jonathan is highly aware of and talking about at City Council. I would very much, I support that with my whole heart, and that we should extend that to low-income and middle-income residents who are struggling right now so that we can actually improve our properties and also be climate-friendly. So I appreciate all your efforts in helping us. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Go back to Clark McCarthy, who signed up online to speak in person. Is Clark McCarthy here? And we have one more in-person sign-up, Leslie McMillan.
Hi, my name is Leslie McMillan. I'm a 7th Ward resident. I'm also a member of the Finance and Budget Committee. I just wanted to encourage the entire council to please reconsider okaying the $11.5 million overage on the budget. It makes budgeting a farce if you're simply going to come back and ask people to just approve something retrospectively. I mean, that's really asking for forgiveness rather than permission. You know, you need to get a better handle on your finances, and you have a fiduciary responsibility, all of you, including your CFO, as well as the council, and you need to be able to articulate to your residents why you're going over those amounts. Also, in addition, I think it's very important to have a much better understanding to the public what the $25,000 limit means that council has to approve. It seems like almost everything on that list was an exception. So, you know, I don't think it speaks to transparency, it's disappointing, and I think you should do a better job.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We're going to go slightly out of order on the agenda. The minutes, I think, should be read as occurring after the special orders of business. And so that brings us to item SP1. Would someone care to make a motion on SP1?
I move item SP1, Evanston's reparations restorative housing program update.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves, uh, item SP one. Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Um, and I believe we'll begin with a presentation. Uh, I see Mr. Cummings here, and I presume Tashik Kerr is here as well.
No, no presentation.
Ah, I see, all right. Okay. All right, Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there was no planned presentation, uh, just a, a couple of recaps for, um, the dinner that took place, and I want to thank our, our committee member, Claire McFarland Barber, who shared minutes at our public comment, as well as our mayor that, that participated. Of all the notes that are, that are part of the public, uh, packet, there's a lot of detail, and I just wanted to take this moment to really acknowledge, uh, some of our staff members. Um, what we, what we've done and what we have shared is, is the work that's happening on the municipal level. I'd also like to take this opportunity to share that the groundwork that was started by our former Alderman, now Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste, that was then continued by our former Alderman, Robin Rue Simmons, has really, you know, beyond what we're doing in Evanston, there are other local municipalities, uh, Providence, Rhode Island, DC, Amherst, Massachusetts, everyone is embarking on this work, and today we, we really acknowledge the first six, sixteen. Um, I want to just quickly thank our, our staff, and this was really kicked off, she's no longer here, but Kimberly Richardson, uh, that worked really hard. Uh, there's Director Audrey Thompson, who has been, uh, along with Tashik Kerr, uh, who met with the initial sixteen that led up to this moment. I also want to acknowledge the legal department led by Nick Cummings and Michelle Ozerigo. Thank you, I'm glad I got that right. And their, and their work along the way to protect us as a corporation. Um, we enjoyed, I want to also thank Chef Nicole Henry and the wonderful food that she prepared. I also want to acknowledge SEPA, our Community Partners for Affordable Housing. They have done years of good work, and they have, if I get this right, Tashik, have contributed over two-hundred-and-fifty hours of volunteer service to help with our, with our seniors who were selected as this, in this first round, to work with them to get their housing goals that will eventually, for some, they're choosing to pay down their, their home mortgage line of credit, and then for others that they're, uh, doing home repairs that will eventually help to improve their, their property values. And at the same time, through the work of Director Audrey Thompson and Tashik, we're looking at other, uh, resources that can help to make their, make them whole. Uh, we've said this, and this has been a theme over the last couple of years, that we, we recognize that this up to 20,000, $25,000 is, is not going to make anyone whole, but it is a, a first step that, uh, we recognize. And with this sixteen, we've learned so much, and we hope to, over the next couple of months at our committee meeting, to secure the funding for the other one-hundred-and-two, uh, ancestors that are in that category, and then from there qualify the group of descendants, and then hopefully continue to move on with, with additional repair work. So I just wanted to, again, thank our, our staff. Um, we can't do this without their partnership, and do know, uh, that there are other municipalities that are building off of our work. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Braithwaite, for that, uh, summation, and thank you to staff and, and all the folks who have led us to here. Uh, as, as we, um, recognize this moment, I, I just also really want to highlight one of the last things that you mentioned there, which is the need for this body to do our part, which is to come up with the funding that will be adequate to, to actually fund. I think many folks out there believe, uh, that we're going to have $10 million within the first 10 years to, to fund reparations, and that's a great goal, but right now, we're nowhere near on track to do that. And so I think the, the next charge, now that we've got, you know, this, the, the, uh, foundation of the program, uh, behind us, and we've gotten our first sixteen folks awarded, at the pace that we're gathering funds in the reparations, uh, in, in the reparations fund now, through the, the taxing sources, it would be another two years before we could do another sixteen, be two years, you know, and so, so forth and so on, it'd be years, you know, almost a decade, or decades, uh, before we even got through, uh, the ancestors. And so the charge that this body, I think, has to take up now is finding, uh, additional sources of revenue to allocate toward reparations, uh, and looking to, uh, expand the program. And as a member of the reparations Subcommittee, uh, that is something I'm laser-focused on, excited for this moment, but truly excited for the work ahead of us that will, uh, lead us to actually fulfilling the promise beyond just the first sixteen. Thank you.
Since no one who's not yet spoken is requesting to speak, we'll go back to Councilmember Braithwaite, um, for a second time with a minute and thirty seconds left.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share the first sixteen that were acknowledged earlier this evening, uh, is receiving the first, uh, municipal repairs in the, in our country. Willie Mae Burrell, Ramona Burton, Clara Daniels, Peter Fowler, Stephen Fraser, Agnes Galbreth, Ann L. Green, Tolly Jones, Mildred Piggy's Cheeks, Aretha Richardson, Linda Silvestri, Ethel Thomas, Louis Weathers, Sheila Weidman, Kenneth Weidman, and also Paul Wilson. Um, their names will, will definitely be a part of our history in town. And, and finally, just in response to, uh, Councilmember Reed, and I wanted to share the other, and I forgot to share this earlier, just the members of the committee, there's myself, uh, Councilmember Reed, also, uh, Councilmember Burns, well, with Claire McFarland that I mentioned earlier, Bonnie Lockhart, uh, our Honorable Former Alderman, Robin Rue Simmons, and also, uh, Carlos Suttons. I agree, and that's going to be our first order of, of business in our next committee meeting, that we meet every first Thursday, nine o'clock, in G three hundred, to, to task our staff to come up with those resources to, to close the gap. So I appreciate your comments. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as no one else is seeking, uh, recognition to speak, would the Clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Vell?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes. This brings us to item SP two. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on item SP two?
Mr. Mayor, it would be my honor to, uh, make a motion on item SP two, the Climate Action and Resilience Implementation Update.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves, um, item SP two. Councilmember Reed seconds. I think this time, we do have a presentation, it looks like, Ms. Pratt.
Yes. Esteemed City Council, Mayor Bis, interim City Manager, interim Deputy City Manager. I am Cara Pratt, the Sustainability and Resilience Coordinator, before you here this evening, to provide the first of two biannual Climate Action and Resilience Plan updates for 2022. First, I'd like to acknowledge that our report this evening is a result of the shared commitment of my colleagues, city staff in all departments, the work of my predecessors, as well as the Evanston Environment Board, the CARP Implementation Task Force, elected officials, and community activists, in order to make progress on our goals. Now is an opportune time to remind ourselves why we invest in climate action and resilience. To put it simply, we can and we must. City government is more nimble than other levels of bureaucracy, while also having the authority to enact creative legislation that has a tangible impact on the lives of our neighbors and our neighborhoods. At the same time, the urgency for action on climate change is growing. The most recent report from the International Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change is a stark reminder of the limited window we have to correct our path and avoid the most catastrophic effects of climate change. We will feel here in Evanston, things like unprecedented storms and flooding, more incidences of extreme heat and extreme cold weather resulting in dire economic hardship, and exacerbating our society's existing failures to adequately protect the vulnerable. Fortunately, here in Evanston, we've already made progress by passing the Climate Action and Resilience Plan in 2018. As a reminder, CARP is separated into two major community-wide sections, mitigation efforts and resilience efforts, and two shorter sections that highlight our responsibility as municipal government. Reducing our carbon footprint in municipal operations, as well as leading in our community and forging partnerships required for continued CARP implementation and accountability. Before going into specific sections, I'd like to reflect on our progress to date. According to most recent data, Evanston has reduced its greenhouse gas emissions by 35% since 2005. However, COVID-19 had a significant impact on Evanston's emissions inventory in 2020, causing a record single-year drop in emissions of 11% from 2019 to 2020. Staff considers this data to be anomalous, and therefore, a three-year average is more enlightening. Evanston's three-year average emissions reduction from 2018 to 2020 is 27%, which is a more accurate measure, as it is more representative of the gradual decrease over time in emissions. Evanston's emissions reductions since 2005 are primarily due to the electric grid becoming cleaner and the consistent purchase of renewable energy credits, or REX, through the city's electricity aggregation program, and by large, community partners like Northwestern University. Now we'll go into our more detailed progress to date on other goals or sub-goals within CARP. I created a sort of an icon system to measure our progress for each goal. The green checkmark indicates that a goal is complete, which doesn't mean that we're not still working on it. It means that a program is in place to assure continued progress on that goal. The yellow arrow is in reference to a goal that's in progress, and there is reason for optimism that is on track to be achieved within the date that we had passed within CARP. The red circle is a goal that's in progress, but generally off-track. It is not likely that we would achieve that goal on time, and this gray question mark is a goal that is, again, on progress, in progress, but that we don't really have data to be able to measure exactly how well we're doing. So within municipal operations, as was mentioned by many of our speakers, the City of Evanston has achieved its goal of 100% renewable energy for municipal operations by 2020 through the electricity aggregation program with MC Squared, which, again, facilitates the purchase of renewable energy credits, or REX, while also providing a new revenue source for the city. However, as purists within the environmental movement will tell you, the additionality of local renewable energy is also important and better reflects the ethos of this goal as it was originally written. We are not on track to achieve zero waste for municipal operations by 2030, and we are also not on track to achieve carbon neutrality for municipal operations by 2035. Some relevant contributing projects to these goals are the implementation of the Municipal Operations Zero Emissions Strategy, which we had discussed several meetings ago, as well as consideration of maximizing municipal rooftop solar installation at facilities like the Robert Crown Community Center. Some things we can do to make progress for zero waste is to talk about a community-wide zero-waste strategy plan, which will contribute data and a roadmap for a more realistic goal-setting exercise for municipal and community-wide zero-waste goals. Additional projects related to municipal operations include the Streetlight Master Plan, pursuing sustainable design of the Evanston Animal Shelter, and ongoing studies related to the Service Center facility and the feasibility of relocating the Civic Center and Police Fire Headquarters. Developing a municipal fleet electrification and rightsizing roadmap in upcoming RFP will be an essential, also essential to reducing vehicle emissions in our municipal fleet. Evanston has made significant progress to reduce building energy consumption by 25% by 2025. We consider this to be a goal that is in progress, and it's possible that we could achieve this goal, not yet completely achieved. With items like continuing to enforce our water and energy benchmarking ordinance, thinking about building code updates, and also setting standards, building performance standards, are important steps related to this goal. In terms of renewable energy, the city, again, is on track to achieve 100% renewable electricity supply for all properties in Evanston. I deem this goal to still be possible by 2030. Some projects that support this include recent legislation at state and federal levels that green the grid or provide more renewable electricity that's available to Evanston residents, as well as our community choice aggregation, community solar, and recently announced accessible solar programs to, again, make progress towards this goal. In terms of zero waste, much like our municipal goal, we are not on track to increase the community waste diversion rate to 50% by 2025. The current estimated waste diversion rate is approximately 24% based on previous calculation methodology. Updating our commercial franchise agreement, establishing a textile recycling program, revising our single-use bag ordinance will all contribute to waste diversion rates. As I mentioned before, a zero-waste strategy plan community-wide is currently under development to establish a roadmap highlighting which waste reduction strategies would be best for our community. This will include a visioning and drafting process, robust stakeholder engagement in our business community, and also defining terminology and waste streams of focus, refining and elaborating goals related to waste, and defining metrics and key performance indicators to gauge progress. In terms of transportation and mobility, our goal to reduce community vehicle miles traveled by 20% by 2025 is not currently on track, and there is no current measure of this data in order to understand how we're doing. For buses and fleets based and operating in Evanston are 50% electric by 2025. We are not on track in this goal, and we estimate that less than 1% of buses and fleets operating in Evanston are electric at this point. Some important highlights for these two points are considering funding a vehicle miles traveled analysis to be able to more accurately compile data and understand how well we're doing and what we can improve. Some projects in support of general supporting walkability and bikability, reducing vehicle miles traveled, include the Chicago Avenue multimodal corridor, corridor improvements, completing design of the Church Street Improvement Project, increasing equitable investment in sidewalk maintenance and infill, and establishing a scooter-share pilot program. Some things we can do, as I mentioned before, regarding electrification of fleets, is issuing an RFP to set the standard for how we can electrify a municipal fleet in our community so that businesses and other fleet operators here in Evanston can learn from that practice. And also, working with Metra, CTA, Pace, and other fleet owners to make significant and rapid investments in electrification. In terms of urban canopy and green space, we are not on track to achieve any of our tree-related goals within CARP. Um, 500 net new trees planted in 2025, we are not on track to achieve that goal, and staff estimates that we have a net negative amount of trees since CARP was passed in 2018. This is due, this tree loss is due mostly to disease, wind events, and voluntary tree removal, which is why the community is working towards reconsidering a tree preservation ordinance, and also focusing on increased investment in gaining tree canopy in the city. There's also a newly established plant healthcare program that provides a strategy to better maintain existing public trees, which will, again, protect our canopy. In terms of outreach, education, and behavior change within CARP, the goal was that each resident reduces their carbon footprint by at least 10% by 2025. Again, we have no proxy or understanding for how this goal could be measured. However, we do have a sense that there is a possibility to continue to educate the community in terms of our Sustain Evanston Business Recognition Program that creates best practices, and a toolkit for businesses, continuing to partner with Northwestern University, Districts 65 and 202, and the nonprofit community to help support this goal and educate community members who are interested in reducing their carbon footprint. So all the goals that I have mentioned so far have been mostly quantitative goals, and now we go into the parts of CARP that are more qualitative. and now we go into the parts of CARP that are more qualitative. So, within our resilience category of CARP, there's broadly environmental justice efforts and resilient infrastructure investments. In the absence of these quantitative goals within the resilience half of CARP, we still have a number of projects and priorities underway. Most importantly, the passing of the Environmental Justice Resolution, 72R20, in support of environmental justice, which calls for the mapping of environmental justice indicators within the city and broadly implementing city projects through the lens of environmental equity. Projects also in support of this resolution include the contemplation of a one-stop-shop for affordable housing retrofits, eliminating lead hazards in the city, providing Evanstonians free access to city beaches. On the wrong slide. One moment. There we go. And conducting an environmental equity assessment and environmental injustice mitigation plan. In terms of resilient infrastructure and preparedness, we think about things like the stormwater master planning process, which requires that hydraulic and hydrologic model that we heard some of our speakers talk about, and that would contemplate how the city's combined relief and storm sewer systems could become more resilient to the effects of climate change. There'd also be a needs analysis related to system improvements under existing and future storm conditions. Some other infrastructure projects related to increased resilience include the water intake replacement and transmission main rehabilitation project, service center plan and service center fuel system replacement plans, water plant electrical reliability and emergency generators, and generally, fiber-optic installation will help bolster our resilience. There's also an emergency preparedness series facilitated by the Emergency Management Division of the Evanston Fire Department, which just had its first event last week at the Evanston Public Library, that helps educate the public generally about preparing for natural hazards and emergency events. Now, in our final section of CARP, which is related to implementation, accountability, and partnerships, a significant and timely project that is crucial to implementing CARP is the strategic and comprehensive planning process. This will be a significant step towards accountability in our planning process. We also really need to focus on innovative financing and finding creative ways to raise the millions of dollars necessary to get us on track to achieve our goals. Continued robust investment in city infrastructure would also make significant progress towards bolstering our resilience. And I also wanted to share this evening a CARP Principles internal document, which is a proposal meant to help city staff as they prepare for bringing items to city council and to the BCCs that they are informed by CARP. I also promised today to give a bit of a roadmap for the next three years of CARP implementation, and while certainly, CARP implementation decision-making is not entirely up to me, I decided to come up with sort of a draft plan for some things that we could consider doing in the next three years. In 2023, I imagine that our community engagement on our zero-waste strategy plan and building performance standards will be well underway, and that's working with property owners and with businesses to better understand how they can comply and what incentives are available to them to be able to reduce waste and reduce building energy usage. Also, I think we'll contemplate green bonds, social impact bonds, private investment for large-scale, and long-term financing for CARP, really getting creative on some of the financial instruments available to us, in addition to reflecting on five years since the passage of CARP, which we'll celebrate at the end of next year, and how we might refine some of our goals, add more quantitative goals in general to the document, and reassess what goals might not be working for us at this moment. We also plan to establish this one-stop-shop for affordable housing retrofits, which will get at our environmental justice concerns and continue to help folks who own and live in affordable housing units access to upgrades so that they can stay in these units and also reduce their carbon footprint. Lastly, within the 2023 broad goals, we have continued implementation of Municipal Operations Zero Emissions Strategy. In 2024, it might be wise for us to implement our strategic and comprehensive plans, implement our zero-waste strategy plan, develop a building performance standards ordinance, and contemplate a stormwater utility fee, which would be the result of this robust stormwater management and stormwater planning process underway. In 2025, we would continue again to implement all the aforementioned plans, implement community-wide electrification campaigns, robustly invest in resilient infrastructure in neighborhoods prioritizing racial equity, our tree canopy and green space, walkability, bikability, and EV charging station deployment. So, with that, this concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. We begin with Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. It's both, uh, it leaves me a bit hopeful that we can start moving on some of this stuff, but also, when looking at the actual goals and where we are on achieving those things, it's a bit sobering and maybe even disappointing that we, as a collective, have not made more progress in those goals and, in fact, are not on track. It seems of the goals, the one that we have solidly been able to keep on track with is with municipal operations and switching to clean energy, and seemingly bringing down some of our municipal greenhouse gases. But the one question I have is particularly with the emissions, municipal emissions, it seems that a good amount of that is offset by RECs, by renewable energy credits. So, if we were to remove the renewable energy credits, which, for folks who don't know, it's where we buy credits from outside of our community and say that, look, we've added to, uh, we've reduced carbon emissions somewhere, and we've paid for that, and we can count it as a credit toward our emissions. So, if we remove those renewable energy credits, where would we stand as far as our own, our municipal operations cutting emissions?
The goal of 100% renewable energy for municipal operations was achieved through the purchase of RECs, and without RECs, I would estimate that we would be at less than 5%.
So, for the most part, we've just kind of purchased our way into, without changing actual behavior, which, again, is, you know, makes even that one rallying, celebrating point kind of a little bit milquetoast because it, you know, we've just, we've just purchased our way into meeting our goal. Still great that we're doing it, and we're supporting those renewable energies somewhere, but I'd love to see us doing more here. I guess my, my big takeaway is, what does this body need to do to really kick up gear to ensure that we're actually hitting these goals?
I think getting really creative with financing, as I mentioned in the presentation, to really understand how we can raise hundreds of millions of dollars to reach our goal, especially our 2050 goal. This is, will cost hundreds of millions of dollars. And that isn't to say that it should cost taxpayer money locally. I think it's to say that we, as a team, need to think about creative solutions for finding ways to finance this, as well as to continue to robustly staff many city departments that have a stake in different aspects of this plan.
And speaking of staffing departments that have a stake in this plan, you are but one, I think you're the only person in your division, uh, how many, do you have any clue? How many of you do we need to, if we were serious about implementing these programs and you were to have the team that you think would be necessary to move us toward our 2030 goals, our 2035 goals, how many, there's only one you, but how many folks in your department and your division do you think we need?
There are a number of strategic hires that I think could be considered. Those would include, most urgently, someone who would be able to help to enforce our energy and water benchmarking ordinance, which is a really data-intensive job that requires close focus and hours of labor dedicated just to looking at those numbers, which is something, as you all can imagine, is difficult to do with a number of responsibilities that are as sort of distractions throughout the day. So, that's one hire that I think would be key in the near term. Some other requirements moving forward are thinking about our forestry division and how it could be staffed and financed and allocated budget in certain ways, as well as thinking about how we're communicating our efforts to the business community especially, and how we can think through incentives and potentially even walk through some of these large properties within the community to help them achieve these goals.
Thank you. And then, lastly, I may have this out of order, but my memory of the largest producers of, uh, climate change causing gases and hazards are, I think in this order, buildings, right, our built infrastructure, then traffic, then our, you know, agriculture, our food consumption, particularly meat. Is that correct? Is that the top three?
At the local level, it's true that buildings are about 80%. Transportation is, I believe, 17%, and then the remaining 2% to 3% is a combination of waste and other extraneous consumptive efforts. Your reflections on meat consumption and its emissions calculations would be a part of a process that we haven't yet examined at the local level, because that wasn't a part of what we considered with CARP, because it's not a part of the scoped emissions that we had looked at.
Yeah, we're not feeding cows here in Evanston, but we certainly are eating, eating them here. When I, when I think about those, you know, at least the top two, which, you know, traffic exists here, buildings obviously exist here, I, I, and particularly with traffic, I think about our infrastructure and a lot of the requirements that we have, I think about some of the codes that we could be changing to de-incentivize driving and to incentivize folks using public transportation. And I, I think charging for parking, right, is maybe a thing that induces folks to consider other modes of transportation. Building less infrastructure for cars incentivizes folks to use alternative modes of transportation. And then alternatively, instead of building that infrastructure for parking, building infrastructure for biking and, and other modes. And so, I'm hoping that, that, that is something we can take up. I think that's low-hanging fruit to start looking at our parking requirements and the impact that they have on, uh, and, and on that 17% of our climate emissions here. And then, and then lastly, I'll ask, because this is something I'm really interested in, which is moving to no longer allow for gas hookups, for natural gas, gas hookups in new buildings. And what impact do you think if we were to ban that, you know, now, how do you think that would impact our building emissions, that 80% of emissions that are caused by buildings?
I think that would have a very significant impact on our emissions portfolio, something that staff considers with a decision like that, is what the impact would be on the development community, as well as on our existing infrastructural load related to the electricity grid. And so, we are considering, thinking through proposals like that, but certainly communicating about them to the public is extremely important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Burns, followed by Nusma.
Yeah, just first wanted to shout out all the, you know, this, there was a mostly volunteer effort that came up with the, with the CARP plan and goals, and just want to acknowledge that as an example of what a pretty large group of volunteers are capable of here in Evanston, but in any town. And so, you know, hats off to everybody that came together. Also want to appreciate that you really laid it out plainly. Sometimes these discussions can go over folks' heads, and, and we have to make sure that not only it's discussed at a level that, that we can understand and contend with, but that our broader, diverse community can quickly understand as they're going about their day and don't have time to do all the extraneous and, you know, research. And so, I appreciate you just laying it out plainly. And, you know, to kind of double down with what Councilmember Reed was really getting at is also, I want you to know, and if, if my colleagues remain silent, and that's, that's consent, but that, in, from my opinion, like, you're here to let us know what we need to do, right? And, and you have full charge, as far as I feel, to lay it out plainly and let us know what we need to do, no matter, and I, and I think no matter how dramatic, and to be honest, based on what we just saw, the dramatic, the more dramatic the policy change, the better, really, at this point. And so, I just, I want to let you know that, because I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know if that's always communicated. There's a lot going on in, in big governments, and so, I just want to let you know that. I think this body really is looking at you to say, look, this is what it is, and it's our job then to reel it back and to make adjustments and ask questions, but, you know, but, but, but I think the more dramatic at this point, the better. We really need to know what changes are going to get us the biggest bang for our buck. On that note, I'm very curious to know, you know, out of the 100 million, whatever it was, dollars that we need to raise, do we have some sense, and I would like my colleagues to chime in if you know, but if everything goes great with the federal government, getting help from them and the state, do we know where that leaves us? What would we need to, you know, to put in this, into this, to, to, you know, come up with the 100 million or whatever it is? Do we have some sense, based on the current legislation that's being discussed on the federal or state government?
The current legislation that's being discussed could help us make really dramatic differences in the short term, in perhaps the next three to five years, and that's, of course, contingent upon us receiving grants that we would apply for to be able to do some of these projects. But I think something that also needs to be considered is the calls that we get as staff from residents who are asking for incentives. These are incentives for things like disconnecting natural gas or installing electric vehicle charging stations in their multi-unit residence. And these are calls that, as the city manager knows, that come in really frequently and might come into you all as well. And that's sort of a gap in funding that we're trying to resolve through the one-stop-shop, through the solar program for low-income residents. And, and that's where we have to get really innovative in providing incentives for businesses and for residents to be able to feel empowered to do what's necessary.
And so, a lot of the legislation that's available, or that, a lot of the discussions that the state and federal government don't necessarily provide funding for, you know, the subsidy programs that we'll need to do?
There is some funding. I, my personal sense is that there's still a reliance on loan products at the federal level, which, as you all can understand, are more burdensome to manage at the municipal level than something like a grant program. And so, what we've been emphasizing through the one-stop-shop and through the low-income solar program is to focus on directly giving money for those programs instead of setting up a loan that has interest or no interest, or just something that has to be managed by staff over time.
Okay. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say that, that I'm someone, when I, when I see similar work being done, I like to bring those two things together when possible. And so, there's two areas that I'm, a lot of the areas I'm focused on, but two related to this discussion is the establishment of the one-stop-shop on one end, and then also another emergency is, which is our housing crisis, people unable to afford to live here. And so, I'd like to bring those two together, and I think one way to do it is through the establishment of this one-stop-shop on a here-to-stay kind of ad hoc working group that I created, where I'm thinking about the potential of creating a neighborhood housing center or a neighborhood stabilization center to help, again, with this other emergency of our, of our housing crisis. And a lot of that is customer service-based, a lot of that is interfacing with community members on a day-to-day basis. That's the same activity that we'll need to do when we establish the one-stop-shop, and to be honest, it's the same, in a lot of ways, it's the same population. And so, I know we have some meetings, you know, set up to discuss that further, but I just wanted to, to outline that quickly to my colleagues, because that's something that, that I'll be bringing back at some point. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Burns for saying a lot of what I would have said anyway. So I'm glad we are, you know, presenting, hopefully, a unanimous front on the importance of climate action at the local level here. I want to add to your, one of the first slides you showed, Kara, we can, we must, I'm going to say we will, we're going to do this, like, we're committed to doing this, you know, I'm committed to doing this. I hope my colleagues will join me in sharing that commitment. So we are going to do this. It's not a question of if, but it's a question of how. How fast? Exactly how are we going to get there? How are we going to afford it? These are all, you know, really important questions to ask, and we don't have answers to all of these questions at this point. This is going to be a multi-year process. I think you're very right in pointing out that it's been easy so far. We haven't asked the community to really change any behavior. We've made it easy for the community to literally do nothing and benefit from renewable energy coming through, renewable energy credits via the aggregation program. It's important that we continue to do that, but if we are going to get to our zero carbon by 2050 goal, the work is going to get harder. We are going to have to ask more of the community. And so what is the city's role in this? The city can certainly lead by example. I think we're doing that with our, you know, municipal zero carbon plan, and we can play a leading role. But let's take the city of Evanston, capital C, city of Evanston, the government of Evanston, take that, those greenhouse gas emissions completely off the table, that's a drop in the bucket. What's really important here is the small c, city of Evanston, the community of Evanston. And the city government can help set the table by raising the bar on energy efficiency requirements, building requirements, perhaps providing some incentives, but it's really going to come down to community members, residents, businesses, organizations in Evanston, taking this commitment seriously and doing the work that they need to do to get there. And so I want to stress the importance of community commitment here, and the city's role is, you know, should be to foster that communication and, you know, allow for some, allow for feedback from community organizations, but we're not going to get to where we need to go if, you know, everybody is not pulling in the same direction. City has a role, but this is not something that the city can accomplish alone. So I'll have more to say on the next agenda item, but thanks for now.
Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
I had my light on, but aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, item SP2 passes. And this brings us to item SP3. Would someone care to make a motion?
I'd like to move approval of Resolution 32-R-22, declaring a climate emergency and an immediate mobilization effort to restore climate stability.
Second.
Councilmember Ravel moves item SP3. Councilmember Reed seconds. We begin with Councilmember Ravel.
So I took the liberty of preparing a few remarks, because this is a really historic moment, I think, for Evanston and the city council. Really heartened by the enthusiasm of my colleagues in response to Kara Pratt's wonderful presentation about where we are with CARP and the big road ahead of us. But I want to talk briefly about my late father-in-law, Roger Ravel. He was a well-regarded oceanographer who studied the buildup of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere and in the ocean, and he predicted early on the effect that increasing CO2 would have on global temperatures and the world's climate. He testified at congressional hearings in the 1950s, in the 1960s, in the 1970s, and in the 1980s. He talked about the perils of continuing to burn fossil fuels and the consequences that would have for life on our planet if we did not do that, if we did not stop that. So in 1957, for example, he told congressional leaders, "It is fairly easy to predict that the carbon dioxide content of the atmosphere could easily increase by about 20%. This might, in fact, make a considerable change in the climate. It would mean that Southern California and a good part of Texas, instead of being just barely livable as they are now, would become real deserts." However, despite the many warnings of scientists like my father-in-law, world leaders failed to take the action that was required. They were too shortsighted. They couldn't envision what the world would look like if they failed to take climate change seriously. Today, unfortunately, the evidence of the impact of unchecked global warming is all too visible. Photos of devastating floods, raging wildfires, and melting ice sheets show us a warming world in crisis. And the Climate Emergency Resolution before us this evening paints a very clear picture of what is in store for Illinois and for Evanston. But we have not only the ability, we here in Evanston, to recognize the threat that climate change poses for our community, we have the imagination to envision a more sustainable future. Our Climate Action and Resilience Plan tells us what we need to do to reduce Evanston's contribution to climate change and to increase our community's resilience to the climate impacts that are coming. By adopting this resolution, we will renew our commitment to taking the action in the speed and the scale that the climate emergency requires, and thereby secure a sustainable, resilient, and healthy future for generations of Evanstonians to come. And I encourage my colleagues to support wholeheartedly the resolution. I have a pretty strong feeling that they will do so, but I turn it over to them for comments now.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Ravel took her comments back to 1959, I believe, or thereabouts. I will go back to the mid-1980s, I'm not sure of the exact year. And I want to recognize the students that showed up. Foster and Emmett, thank you guys for being here and raising your concern. I was your age in my biology class in high school, when my teacher, Mr. Kochbaser, first told us about this. So this is not new. It goes back even beyond, you know, even further back than when I was in high school. So we are today where we should have been a year ago, two years ago, 10 years ago, 20 years ago? That's not the point. The point is, moving forward, you know, starting today, we are recommitting to the goal of zero carbon by 2050, acknowledging its importance at the local level, and hopefully what we do here will be reflected in other communities around the country and other communities around the world. I'll also point out that we're not doing this alone. Evanston is not an energy island, we're not an emissions island, we're not a policy island, we're not a funding island. So we're doing everything we can here at the local level to get ahead of this problem, but we are not going to be able to get there unless action happens at the state level, at the national level as well. So I am certainly hoping that everybody who's advocating here at the local level will also, you know, continue to advocate at the state and federal level as well. Just want to point out a couple of things. The Climate Emergency Resolution makes CARP implementation an official goal of the city council, and is also committing us to a biannual report, similar to what we just received from Kara. So here in April, again, next year, at the city council meeting closest to Earth Day, we'll get kind of an annual update, and commit at that time to another 12 months' worth of annual action items. We'll also be getting an update in October. And I think that is very timely, because that will put CARP implementation at the front of our minds, at the center of our radar screens, as we go into the budget discussion for the following year, because we know this is going to cost money. Last budget cycle, we took a tentative step forward and created a climate action fund. That's a line on paper, there's a fund number with $0 in it. But bureaucracy sometimes moves slowly. Step one, create the fund. Step two, let's figure out where to get some money from. So you spoke to the necessity of being creative about funding and looking forward to future conversations about that. So I wholeheartedly endorse the concept of the climate emergency, especially since it's paired with 22 concrete steps we're committing to taking this year. And I just want to thank everyone who was involved in making this happen, the community members of the environment board, thanks Wendy and Jerry, and everyone involved in the climate implementation, or the CARP Implementation Task Force, and our friends at Citizens Greener Evanston and Environmental Justice Evanston. Frustrated but optimistic, I'm going to, I'm less frustrated and more optimistic now, after this vote passes. So thanks, everybody, for being a part of this, and we're going to need your continued cooperation.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, I just want to add my voice to say thank you to the folks who are leading this, the students, our folks who have been leading this for a long time. Thank you to all of you, new councilmembers, our, again, councilmembers who have been leading this for a long time. I'm excited about this, I'm in full support. I'm also excited, you know, Councilmember Newsma mentioned the climate action fund. I'm hoping that one of the first steps we can take to bolster that fund is, we have a referral that I made a while ago that should be coming back before us pretty soon, that would add, if passed, it would add a fee to our will tax that would produce, over the course of a term, possibly a million dollars of money for the climate action fund. And as Councilmember Newsma said, all of these goals are going to take money to implement, and I'm excited about getting started on the process of figuring out actual funding sources for our climate action plan. So looking forward to backing it up with some real funds.
Seeing that no one else is requesting to speak, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Seven voting in favor and none voting against, Resolution 32-R-22, declaring a climate emergency and an immediate mobilization effort to restore climate stability, is unanimously This brings us to the consent agenda. Are there items that members would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes. I'd like to remove A2.
A2?
A22.
A22?
Item P1 was tabled in committee.
So P1 is removed and will not be considered on the floor tonight?
Item H1 should be removed from the consent agenda.
I'm sorry, you said H1?
H1.
Okay.
F1?
Yes, A22.
F1?
And P2?
And P2. So at this time, I have A2, A22, A23, P1, which is not up for consideration, P2, H1, and F1.
A13 has also been removed from the consent agenda. It's held in committee.
I got it, A13 is held in committee too, okay. So just to recap, the items I have are A2, A13, which is held in committee, A22, A23, P1, which is held in committee, P2, H1, and F, as in Frank, 1. Is there anything else? Going once, going twice. In that case, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda, except for all of that stuff. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves passage of the entire consent agenda, except for A2, A13, A22, A23, P1, P2, H1, and F1. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the consent agenda, consent agenda, except for all that stuff, passes. This brings us now to item A2. Would someone like to make a motion on item A2?
Mr. Mayor, move item A2, approval of the contract award with Christie Webber and Company Landscape for the 2022 citywide landscape maintenance in the dollar amount of $83,975.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves item A2. Everyone seconds, but I heard Councilmember Braithwaite the clearest. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Reed.
I have raised issues about this contractor, I'm not going to get into it. I would like us to look into how we can get more local contractors and contractors who are better corporate citizens, if you will, so I'll just be voting against this, that's all.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, item A2 passes. I apologize, I messed something up.
I'll move the minutes.
No, the minutes are part of the consent agenda. I messed something else up. Councilmember Burns, you shouldn't have included A12 in the consent agenda, because you wanted introduction and action to happen simultaneously. So if you still want that to happen, do you mind? God, I guess what we'll have to do is move to reconsider the consent agenda. Sorry, Councilmember Reed?
I don't think we have to do that, it was out of order in the first place, so I think we can just kind of take it up. It shouldn't have happened, it would have been out of order.
Mr. Cummings?
So I'm inclined, for the record, to go along with the mayor's original ruling. However, Councilmember Reed's point is well-taken, which means the vote on the consent agenda would be completely void anyway, because it included an item that was out of order. So...
Okay, so then that's, then we can, we can sort of have it both ways. The chair, having come back to his senses, rules everything that happened on the consent agenda out of order, and would now entertain a new motion on a consent agenda with an additional deletion of item A12. Would someone care to make that motion?
So moved. Second.
So Councilmember, I don't even know who I think, Newsma moved the consent agenda, sorry, Councilmember Braithwaite moved the consent agenda, except for items A2, A12, A13, A22, A23, P1, P2, H1, and F1. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll on this one?
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Okay, on that improved consent agenda vote, there are seven voting in favor, none voting against, and the improved consent agenda passes. This brings us to item A12. Councilmember Burns, would you like to move that we suspend the rules to enable a vote for introduction and action to occur simultaneously tonight?
Yes, so moved. Second.
Councilmember Burns moves suspension of rules to allow for us to do introduction and action tonight. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Ravel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor, none voting against, receives this required unanimous support, the rules are suspended, so now, Councilmember Burns, you can make a motion to do introduction and action simultaneously.
Yeah, motion approval ordinance 33022 to amend the 5/5 redevelopment project area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves introduction and action of item A12. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes, and ordinance 33-O-22 has been passed. Sorry for that mess up on my end. This brings us now to item A22. Would someone like to make a motion on item A22? Councilmember Braithwaite moves adoption of ordinance 16-O-22. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? We begin with Councilmember Reed, followed by Newsma.
Oh, I was going to make a motion to hold this until our next meeting. It needs some additional work, which I've discussed with staff. We don't need to go into detail right now.
Yeah, I also wanted to make a motion to hold this, add a truck route on Custer Avenue running through the 8th Ward, and I have a ward meeting this, this week, and I want to have a discussion with the 8th Ward about this. I don't think folks are going to be keen to have a truck route running down Custer, and so I just want to make sure that we're getting community feedback on this.
So do you want a second?
I'll move to hold it.
Well, there's already a motion to hold on the table. Do you want to second the motion?
Oh, okay, sure, second.
All right, so Councilmember Newsma moves to hold item A22. Councilmember Reed seconds. So with the motion and a second, the hold occurs unless there's a motion to overturn the hold. Is there a motion to overturn the hold? Seeing none, the hold holds. And we move on to item A23, with the understanding that item A22, ordinance 16-O-22, will be on the agenda two weeks from today, which I think is maybe May 10th? I don't know. The future.
May 9th.
May 9th, that's right. May 9th. Thank you. So this brings us to item A23. Would someone?
So moved. Mr. Chair, I'll move item A23, ordinance 29-O-22, amending the city code Title IV Building Regulations and Title V Housing Regulations, and this is to adopt the latest additions of the International Code Council Model Codes, including plumbing, fire, and building codes, I believe.
Second. Councilmember Newsma moves item A23. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
So I would just like to get a better understanding of the impact of this after hearing public comment from Ms. Payden. I don't fully understand how this impacts our landlords. If somebody could just address that, because I heard some, there was concern expressed about this not going through the subcommittee that I chair on housing, so I want to, you know, fully understand if, in fact, this should have been, this should have been something that should have gone to the housing subcommittee. Thank you.
Good evening, Johan Nyden, Community Development Director. The city updates its building code on a certain interval. So ours has been a nine-year update. The pandemic delayed us a little bit, so we're doing it the update now. This would not have gone to any subcommittee. It comes to administration of public works. The last one we did predates my tenure in this position, but it, it updates, building codes need to be updated. New building technologies are available. The most noteworthy one in this update is some of the climate action and resiliency items that have made major improvements in terms of building science, and those are incorporated into this, this code. So when somebody fills out a building permit, they have to then implicitly follow the updated building code.
Thank you. So, and what could potentially be the impact for existing landlords? Is there, I mean, is there something I'm missing here? I just want to fully understand the implications.
Well, they would have to comply with whatever new building code is there, but there's nothing.
If it's new construction.
Right, if it's new construction, but if there's an addition, or if, I'm just trying to think of something off the top of my head. I'm not the building official, but if there's something maybe with the mechanical code or HVAC or plumbing code, they might have to update if they're doing that work. But they don't have to update their building now that we have a new building code. This is not something like you have to come into compliance with something new.
Okay, so people, so nobody would be cited for being out of compliance for existing based on this?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an, oh, Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Newsma, followed by Revel.
Yeah, so just to clarify, this would only apply in the case that somebody would go in and apply for a building permit, whether that's an addition, renovation, or new construction. This isn't, doesn't, it doesn't affect anybody who's not doing anything.
Right. None of you have to go home and bring your home into compliance for the 2022.
It'd be awesome if you did. Go for it, but it's not required. And I will say that this very item that we are about to vote on now, we just said five minutes ago that we were going to vote on, this is item number five on our, on our action plan. So let's, I'm looking forward to crossing some stuff off, crossing some to-do items off of our list right away.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Burns.
Oh, I'm on the same wavelength with Councilmember Newsma. Basically, we've been waiting for the ability to update our codes to match the international updated codes, because they are going to be very helpful with our efforts to move forward with our Climate Action Plan, in addition to just improving our building stock in general.
Councilmember Burns?
I've paid close attention to the TARP use restrictions and the building contact information, with that the, the last one being, as it relates to this discussion, the important one. So is that something that they, property owners will need to do now, or only when they make changes, when something's modified on the property?
Well, yes, if, if you're using a TARP as a roof cover.
Not the TARP one, but the building contact information?
Yes, they would have to, they would have to update that.
Okay, good.
So, and usually we've given, you know, when we've made those kinds of changes, we've, you know, we have a database of the people who are landlords, registered rental units. We can communicate that out, and, you know, generally, we've given grace periods for something like that, but that can, that's a relatively low dollar.
And I've been fully supported. I just want to, you know, separate that out, make that distinct from some of the other changes, and it's a change I wholeheartedly support, and, and yeah, you know, we, we should do the proper outreach to, to property owners, is just make them aware of the change. So, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Councilmember Harakaris? Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
So I hadn't planned to pull this, but this evening with the, sort of the confluence of this item, plus that we are voting to declare, that we voted to declare a climate emergency, as well as moving forward on our CARP implementation plan, I just really wanted to stop and express, one, my excitement for this project, but also praise the developer for, for moving forward with a plan of adaptive reuse of these beautiful historic buildings on Sherman Avenue. And, you know, in the words of Carl Elefante, the former president of the American Institute of Architects, as we all know, the greenest building is the one that already exists. And I think we should do a lot more of this. Looking to adaptive reuse is a very important means also of reducing emissions and, and moving forward with our plan. So I'm very excited about this, this, this project on Sherman Avenue to develop the pedestrian alleyway, and with the, you know, these lovely cherished legacy heritage businesses that already exist there, in combination with the development of the alleyway and diversity theater. I think this is just very exciting, and I think it dovetails really nicely with our other green initiatives this evening. So, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, ordinance 18-O-22 passes. This brings us to item H1. Would someone like to make a motion on item H1?
I'd like to move ordinance 19-0-22, amending portions of the city code 9-5-20, noise is prohibited. This is for introduction.
Second.
Councilmember Revel moves item H1. Councilmember Reed seconds. If there's any discussion, we begin with Councilmember Revel.
So I removed this from the agenda because there, there are several parts, several parts that are being amended, and if you look at page 434 of your packet, there is one, there is, there is an additional amendment that was not actually considered and voted on at Human Services, so I'm, I'm needing to amend, amend this proposed ordinance to add this additional amendment. And what it does is it remove, it would delete language, sounds, animals, or things which interfere with the peace or comfort or disturb the quiet enjoyment of any person in the city. And this Corporation Council flagged this because it's another phrase that's in our code that's very subjective and is difficult to enforce fairly in the city. So at his suggestion, we were going to add this amendment to, to the noise ordinance amendments. The reason for it is similar to what's being struck at the very beginning, noise is prohibited on page 433, which once again talks about endangering the comfort and health of, of people in the city. Just very difficult to enforce fairly. So I guess I, I can, I can move to make that amendment now, or we could have a discussion about the whole ordinance, however you'd like to proceed.
I would, I would recommend making the motion to make the amendment.
Okay.
Now, though, though I think the Corporation Council wants to weigh in, and this was, this is definitely one where I did not follow everything you said, and so I'm going to need to see this one in writing before and before. But let's, let's let the Corporation Council weigh in first.
Just, just to put it simply, the law department staff overzealously included this version of the ordinance in the packet. This was the version that needed to be properly presented in two weeks after the amendment had been made to include what is now Section 3 in the ordinance. Section 3 in the ordinance would be something that would have been added, but it was not included in terms of what passed out of Human Services at the beginning of April. So what the amendment that Councilmember Revel probably is expecting to make is to include Section 3 to what is actually now before you, because that's not what actually came out of committee. So what you are reading now tonight is what the amendment that she would have made tonight. It includes that already.
And so that's striking A-3-1A?
Yes.
So we want to get rid of A, that didn't happen in committee. The packet makes it look like it's happened, but it actually hasn't happened yet.
Hasn't happened yet, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would have normally been making that a motion to amend, and I would have been sending you the language so you would have it, because you would not have it in the packet, but fortunately, here we have it in the packet for you to see what my amendment is.
So, so I, in that case, we do actually have it in writing. Councilmember Revel's motion is to harmonize the, the item, in fact, before us with what the packet, to make it match what the packet already says it is.
Right, yes.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Point of information?
So let me just spit that out. So Councilmember Revel makes the motion to align the ordinance before, before us with what's in the packet. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Go ahead, Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, point of information, I am just curious, so, albeit, it seems like there are a number of other things that made it in that were not, and maybe my recollection is wrong, but were not voted on by the committee, such as including the, making an exemption for Northwestern and for Out of Space.
No, they, they were in the discussion of what we voted on.
So that was voted on at committee?
Yes.
The, the only thing that was new that was not at committee was Section 3, where we amend A-3-1. The amendments that came out of committee were, for example, in Section 2 of the ordinance, number 5.
Page again, Nick.
It's on page 434 of the packet.
Thank you.
Number, Section 2, number 5, it talks about exemptions. It used to read that F2, I'm sorry, let me back up. Organizations, businesses, or similar entities that have obtained a special event permit approved by the city council are exempt from subsection F2 and F4 of the subsection. That was actually amended at committee to say just F2. So that is before the council appropriately, because that was amended at, at Human Services on April, I believe it was 4th.
Page again?
I can show you the.
Page again is 4.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, there's a motion on the floor to amend the, the proposed ordinance. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Revel's motion?
I can just clarify what we're amending. I'm on page 34, and I just want to.
You're on page 434? Councilmember?
Yeah, I just.
So, so the, we're just, the packet is.
Up to date.
The packet, the amendment turns what we're doing into what the packet says it was. So if you're, if you're, if you're just tracking the packet, then you, the thing that you thought we were doing is what we're doing after the amendment passes.
This, striking paragraph A should not have been in the packet because it was not struck. So it just needs to be that's it.
So we're just catching up with ourselves.
Okay.
All right, I don't see any further discussion, but I do see some quizzical body language, so I don't want to force a vote while people still have questions. Are there any questions on the amendment?
Okay.
Council. Okay, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll on Councilmember Revel's proposed amendment? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
With seven votes in favor, none against, the amendment passes, so now the proposed ordinance has been amended, so it says what the packet says it says. Excuse me, sorry. So now we can proceed to a discussion on the amended ordinance. The first person in line is Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you. I am, as it is drafted now, I am not in support of this ordinance. Part of the discussion, as, as I recall, we, we did, and this is why I think we need to actually start making motions, because I, I very clearly stated at the meeting that I was willing to support, or more likely to support, a decibel level far above 55 decibels. Again, as was noted by one of our public commentators, normal conversation if I were to shut.
[inaudible].
Decibels, and so to say that that noise level at 750 feet is unacceptable, I, I, I find it hard to, to fully grasp, and particularly if we're making exemptions for, you know, certain institutions like Northwestern, like Out of Space. Again, I support, you know, I think we need to, to look at this ordinance more comprehensively and, and think about, you know, the, for example, 750 feet, the fact that that is the marker is a fairly, and I, I know how we landed on that, but, and it's, but it's a fairly arbitrary marker, 750 feet. It's just that that so happens to be the distance from Post 42 to the closest neighbors. And so. like Out of Space, again, I support, you know. I think we need to look at this ordinance more comprehensively and think about, you know, the, for example, 750 feet, the fact that that is the marker is a fairly, and I know how we landed on that, but it's a fairly arbitrary marker, 750 feet. It's just that that so happens to be the distance from Post 42 to the closest neighbors. And so I would really like us to take more time with this. You know, I was looking forward to potential demonstration from staff about, you know, what 65 decibels is at 750 feet. I think we need to do more. I feel the neighbors, but I think we can craft better policy to solve the issue. And I'll reserve my time for later.
How much time do we have? 2:50.
Okay, I'll reserve that.
Next is Councilmember Burns, followed by Kelly.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what I've kind of consistently said from the start. I mean, ideally, we front load all of our requests, including a request for a demonstration. I mean, I'm happy to reluctantly, you know, support this, but I would much rather us do it the right way, which I think is, we should really plan some of those demonstrations beforehand. I know in talking to Chief Eddington, I think he said equipment would need to be purchased and it's probably, I don't know the cost, but it's probably worth doing just to make sure we're getting this right. Because I just, I don't, I don't have faith that a decibel reader, especially any old decibel reader, not one, maybe one of the more expensive ones, I don't know, can properly filter out 10 different noises all happening at the same time while trying to understand what one in the far-off distance is measuring at. I just, I can't, I can't wrap my head around that. I need to see it. So again, I would much rather prefer to see it, to have a demonstration before moving forward with this.
Mr. Cummings? All right. Next is Councilmember Kelly, followed by Newsma.
Thank you. So could you just clarify who's exempt for me? I'm sorry. I'm just trying to. Only if you got a permit? Or is anybody automatically provided, has a permit?
Sorry, thank you. If an organization has already gone through the process of getting a special event permit, which also includes a loudspeaker permit, they would be, and that gets approved by city council, that would be, they'd be exempt. So that's the space concerts, for example. And then educational institutions, this is thinking about Northwestern football games, ETHS football games, et cetera, those would be exempt as well.
Okay, thank you. So are frat houses, are those considered?
That's, I would not consider that to be the educational institution.
Okay, so we might need to delineate that. I know in some places, cities as well as states, they're very clear about what aspects of a university are considered educational and which ones are not. So I think we might need to make that clear. So my main issue with this is community. I just, I feel like this is going to undermine bringing community together. I think it's so important to encourage people to talk to each other. And I know, I think just the first or second week on this job as council member, I got a call from constituents who live on the lakefront because there was some loud music on the parkway across the street at Dawes Park. And, you know, I went over there and talked with the families and explained that, you know, there's homeowners across the street trying to sit down on the porch and could they turn the volume down a little bit? It was a little awkward for me, but to me that was so far more preferable than having someone call a police to go over with a decibel stick, measure the decibels, find the family. I just, I think there's another way we can approach this and I'm very concerned that this is going to lead to unnecessary policing and also, you know, our police force. I mean, I just think they're strained right now and to add this additional burden of figuring out, okay, there's a loud noise, go 750 feet away, let's see if it measures 55, which I agree is also, I'm not sure about that sound level really being appropriate. So I'd like us to take a pause on this. I just, I mean, I live very near Northwestern, there's constantly parties and noise and that's the nature of where I live. But if I, you know, wanted to, I could be, I'm sure it's exceeding all the time, that level. So I'm particularly concerned about what this will do to community. I really want to bring community together. I do the same thing with my constituents in my ward who have, you know, student housing all around to try to have neighbors talk to each other rather than call the police. And so this concerns me that we're moving in a direction that's going to put more of a wrench between neighbors and community members. And I think there are other ways that we can handle this to bring us together in a better way. So, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to second guess the work of this committee. I'm not on that committee, so I will support whatever comes out of the committee. With some reluctance, having worked on similar issues on a professional level when it came to wind turbine noises, what we're trying to do here is quantify annoyance. And I can understand the urge to quantify something and because you can, there is a decimal meter and you can put a number on it, but it's hard to quantify how annoying something is to somebody. I can think of examples that really, really grate on my nerves, but my wife thinks they're awesome. And vice versa, when it comes to sounds and volumes and stuff like that. So if you got to put a number on, you can't enforce it unless it's quantifiable and there is a number. But what it really comes down to is what Councilmember Kelly was saying, is just good neighborliness. And if you're doing something that annoys a neighbor, you should stop. If you're being annoyed by something that a neighbor is doing, just talk to them. That's the first, you know, line of defense, rather than calling the police and having a PhD testimony on decibel measurement. So I don't know if I contributed anything to this discussion, but I'll leave it at that.
Call that the common sense rule.
So no one who has not yet spoken is requesting to speak, so we go back to Councilmember Ravel with three minutes and 30 seconds left.
It is very hard to have a demonstration. As I've been learning over the past year and a half, the way sound travels and diminishes as it travels is very complicated. So a very rough estimate of what the proposed sound limit would mean that's in the proposed ordinance here is that the sound from a loudspeaker, the loudspeaker could be at 75 decibels and it would diminish to 55 decibels if you were someone standing 750 feet away. And talking specifically about the 75 decibels, that is, when Post 42 applied for its special event permit in 2020, it stated that they would maintain, quote, "a volume under 75 decibels at all times at the back area of the crowd." So they were already committing to that 75 decibel limit in 2020. Unfortunately, it was very difficult for them to continue to really maintain that decibel limit. So it was, from the, for the residents' point of view, it was too loud. And then I guess the question is, well, what does 75 decibels sound like? Or what does 55 decibels sound like? So I looked up, you know, there are these general kinds of examples that you can find on the web. And a really frequent one for what 75 decibels is, is chamber music in a small auditorium. But, so I don't know if that's helpful or not helpful. You know, if it makes it easier to put something like this into effect and say, here's what the decibel limit should be at the loudspeaker versus 750 feet away, that would be, you know, that would be fine as well. It's just, for these residents, there just needs to be some objective way to determine when the music is too loud or not too loud.
Next is Councilmember Reed with two minutes and 50 seconds left.
Thank you. Again, I understand the problem that you, that we're trying to solve here. You know, but I look at resources and I see that a dishwasher can be about 80 decibels. And my dishwasher is certainly, I'm sure it's one of those 80 decibel dishwashers. And sometimes I hear my neighbor's dishwasher, you know, at certain times of the day or night. And, you know, just kind of is what it is. And so I really wonder if a dishwasher inside of your house is 80 decibels, a speaker that you're playing music for people outside. You know, I also see here that if you're listening to music in your living room at a reasonable level, that that's about 76 decibels. And so to say that a speaker that's outside playing music for people in a large field is going to be at the same sound level as your, you know, indoor speaker in your living room, I don't know. So I think there's a way to look at it. I do like the idea of judging from the source rather than, you know, the, you know, 750 feet out or anything else. So I think, I would recommend that this, because this is kind of a, I think this council wants to find a solution. And I think this issue, because we're trying to get it right and we're not trying to put out an arbitrary law that could be adding to, we just talked about reparations, we talked about equity and all those things. And so I think we're trying to get something that is equitable, that achieves the goal without putting more undue burden on either our police department or residents. I'd recommend that this maybe go back to committee and, you know, we can look at it a little bit further. So is that, so I'll move that we refer item H1 back to the Human Services Committee for another reading to make a few more amendments. And I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember, oh, sorry.
Thanks. Councilmember Reed moves that ordinance 19-0-22 be re-referred to the Human Services Committee. Councilmember Brithwaite, seconds. No, it's not you? I'm sorry. Councilmember Harakaris, seconds. The literal opposite end of the dais, shows what I know. Before, the Corporation Council had a light on. Did you want to weigh in on this?
I just wanted to, and I was actually going to try and send it to the council. I can't find it right now. But there's a map and part of our city code that requires us to give notice to neighbors, particularly part of our planned development, notice neighbors within 500 feet of whatever that development is, just as an example. And that this ordinance is 750 feet, which is much greater. And 500 feet is usually covers, and I'm thinking of the water pumping station in James Park issue. There were several homes within like two blocks, it's like two or three blocks covered the 500 feet. So to try and give you an example of what 750 feet is, and to use Councilmember Reed's example about his dishwasher being 80 decibels, if you can hear Councilmember Reed's dishwasher from 750 feet away, that's what the ordinance was written to try and demonstrate. And I was actually trying to find the GIS map to sort of send to the council so they could see what 500 feet away would look like, but that's all I was trying to explain.
Thanks. Is there any discussion on Councilmember Reed's motion to re-refer the item to the Human Services Committee? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Brithwaite. Councilmember Newsma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Seffordham. Councilmember Ravel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Harakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
With seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion passes and ordinance 19-0-22 will be re-referred to the Human Services Committee for further discussion and consideration and deliberation. And this brings us now to item F1. Would someone like to make a motion on item F1?
Mr. Chair, I'll move item F1, ordinance 26-0-22, authorizing interim city manager to increase the total fiscal year 2021 budget.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves item F1. I believe that was Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? We begin with Councilmember Reed.
I'll defer to Councilmember Kelly to go first and then follow up.
Councilmember Kelly didn't turn her light on.
I thought I saw a reach. All right. Well, then I will, go ahead. Yeah, so I have, I have a number of issues with this. We discussed this in the Finance and Budget Committee a week or two ago, a few weeks ago. And there were a lot of concerns raised then. Director Desai walked us through a number of the issues. And my main concern was, you look at this and there's some positives, right? There's a positive that we are $30 million over where we thought we would be, correct? So we're $30 million over where we thought we would be. That's great news. But we also went over budget, $11 million, which had we not been in a position where we were $30 million over, this would be quite concerning for our finances. And then when I dug deeper into it, we went through most of the items and we saw that the majority of it was approved by the council. So, you know, millions of dollars were approved by this body at some point. And, you know, that, if we approve things that went over budget, that falls on us and that's our responsibility, in my opinion. But there still remain, you know, three, three and a half, maybe even four million dollars of items that the council did not approve. And I am aware of situations where employees, particularly employees of color, have been disciplined for going over budget, $100,000. And so if we're disciplining folks for going over $100,000, going over $3 million without council approval seems extremely problematic to me. And so I guess my first question for Corporation Council is, it's my understanding, and I think this is a fairly basic understanding of municipal government, that all appropriations, of course, we've allowed appropriations up to $25,000 to be approved by the city manager, but appropriations over $25,000 must be approved by the council. Is that a correct understanding of our form of government?
Not completely. The city has an ordinance that authorizes the city manager to let contracts for goods and services for $25,000 or less. But the appropriation law of the state statute for appropriation just dictates that the city council can appropriate funds in various different fund buckets, like we have a general fund, et cetera, et cetera. But how those dollars are spent within that can be done in various different ways. And what I don't understand in your statement is that there were $3.5 million that did not get approved by the council. I don't know how that would be possible with every bill's list coming before the city council. So I guess I wouldn't be able to further opine on that without having specific examples that the city manager or someone else approved a dollar figure that was not on a bill's list.
Okay. I will give you those examples in two seconds if someone else has questions or if we just want to hold my time. For example, I can give you one that was not approved by the city council off the top of my head. There's, in the memo that was sent to us in the city manager's office, there was several hundred thousand dollars in payouts for, in benefit payouts to folks who have departed from the city. And the council did not approve those. So there's at least $300,000 there.
So the contract that was agreed to, the council may not have approved the contract, but the actual payout was approved by the council on the bill's list.
I don't believe that to be accurate, but I will yield my time for now. May I know how much time I have left?
We have our CFO here. I'm not exactly sure how a check gets cut on the city without it being approved on the bill's list by APW.
Good evening, Mayor.
I'm sorry. This point of information, how much time do we have left?
Two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So yeah, let's have the clarification here. And again, I don't know whether, Mayor or the city council, you want me to go through the presentation first or just kind of continue on the subject which Councilmember Reed has brought up.
I would advise that you answer questions as they arise and so I would begin with this question.
So, I mean, you would notice here, like 11.5, yes, I heard even in the public comments that, oh, cities spend 11.5. 4.8 million ARPA funds, when we did the budget for 2021 in October of 2020, November 20, it was approved, we never knew about ARPA, that we will get this money. And obviously, these items were approved by the council. The other big item, $3.8 million in debt service. The other big item, $3.8 million in debt service fund. It is an accounting treatment. When we refinanced the bonds, the bonds which were paid off are treated as an expense from the accounting standpoint. So we have to report here. If you look at my presentation, and I'll bring it up in the later, you would see the revenues in debt service fund higher by over $4 million because we got almost $700,000 in savings from refunding. So this is just an accounting. So that's like 80% of that 11... The other thing which I think the Corporation Council Cummings said, anything above $25,000, you know, it comes to the city council. So even when you say that in city manager's office, whether it's a termination payout, the contract is approved by the city council. And some of the other things which I had explained in the detail at the Finance and Budget Committee, why we were over, because we were like little conservative on special service areas and we budgeted less revenue. And so we budgeted the same, well, less expenditure. When we got the more revenues under the contract adopted by the city council in the past with the special service areas, that whatever property tax revenue comes in, you have to share with us. So we got more revenues and we shared more with them. And obviously went over, as you see some of them here in the special service area, six, seven, like that. In the parking system, same thing. Some of those things which went over because of the kind of bigger capital projects, which came to the city council for their approval. And the police pension, I mean, I've mentioned again, we don't have the control, the city council doesn't have pension, board approves this. But three employees, three police officers left and went to the other cities. And under the State Pension Act, we have to transfer the contributions with the interest to those communities where they went. So we had almost three police officers for which we paid around $600,000 to the other community. So these are some of the general ideas. So the sense that, okay, city council never approved anything or some of those unauthorized or... Yes, obviously, if it's like something five grand, $10,000, which is falls within the, what do you call, the city manager's power, that must have been taken. But any other contracts which are required to come to you, services, supplies, whatever, that have come to the council. And as I mentioned again, I would talk about the ARPA and debt service fund, which accounts for 80% of that thing. After, I mean, we had this discussion even... I talked to the auditors a few times after our conversation with the Finance and Budget Committee. And they said some of those committees don't do that, you know? We would simply kind of put a note in your audit report that these are the funds which exceeded budget. But the city of Evanston does it like so many other communities. As a good practice, that to come to you and say, okay, we exceeded here and these are the reasons.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Kelly, followed by Burns, followed by Nusma.
So I understand, you know, that the suggestion is that we approved all these, although I don't recall being informed that this is something urgent, unexpected that's come up and we need to exceed budget in this fund. And that's what was lacking. And I feel like it's a little bit like uninformed consent, right? We go forward because there are a lot of things. For example, I feel very strongly that we fund our pension obligation at 100%. And maybe, you know, and I know we're going over budget here, but maybe it wasn't that urgent. Maybe there's something else that we felt was more urgent to go over budget. I just, I think it's really important that we're always informed if this is exceeding budget so that we can properly make that decision. Okay, so... I think there are many... Again, I think we have to devise, we have to make a plan. I would like to ask that staff figure it out so that when you want to go over budget or you feel a need to go over budget or it's something urgent, that it's explicitly stated each time, each and every time, that this will be an expenditure over budget. Because, for example, what Councilmember Reed mentioned with the $420,000 in over-budgeted payouts for termination or for, I'm sorry, for separation, that this was in the bill's pay list. So that suggests to me now that I need to go through all those little tiny items and say, ask if each one is exceeding budget. And I don't think it should be that way. And from my inquiries, just generally with a few other communities, it's not that way. So I would like to ask that going forward, absolutely, we are always apprised because I'd like to have the option to say, you know, it's much more urgent to put $2 million towards 100% towards our pension, for example, obligation so that we're at 100%. We've seen it balloon from 140 million to 250 million from 2008 until now. That bleeding needs to stop. So, for example, that's a top priority for me. But I couldn't, I had no idea that we were okaying expenditures that were exceeding budget.
I mean, again, let me clarify a few things here. Generally, we don't budget for the vacation payout. So suppose if I leave today, whatever the balance I carry, it's not there. So when I was looking at the city manager's business unit, we had a couple of people left besides Erica. And they were paid their vacation time, which is regular under the... You know, it's a normal practice with any city. Now, we don't budget for those kind of vacation because sometimes we feel like that, okay, we might have an offset from the gap we have by the time we hire something. Some of those things I see when I looked into the one of the business unit. And again, I think Councilmember Kelly, it was a little incorrect statement at the Finance and Budget Committee where we kind of inadvertently put that city manager's business unit 1505 was over budget by 420,000 because of termination payout. No, it is because of three different line items. And I think we explained that, you know, that one of the item was salaries. One of those, the only termination payout out of that 420,000 is only 127,000 for Erica, which is charged to that 1505. The other two payouts are charged to the different business unit. So that was one of the corrections. Some of the other things which we paid out, I think I looked at, is almost like under the 100,000 under city manager's business unit for service contracts for staff racial equity policy to UIC, 20,000. Service contract for staff racial to, again, UIC, 15,000. So we paid around 35,000, which wasn't budgeted. The only item I saw in city managers for this service and contract was a Phoenix, what do you call, the security. And then I looked at a couple of other payments. Service contract for ICOM pass subscription and where we have to pay like almost, you know, $15,000. So there were some of the things which were not budgeted and which caused some of these business units, the line items to go over the budget.
For a point of clarification, though, yes, you did provide that. But I have here, I see 98,000 for Chief Cook, 98,000 for Lynn, 189... This is far more than what the number you just gave me. 189,000 for Cook. And 153,000, I'm sorry, and for Storley... Right, so that was a much bigger number than the number you just gave us. I just, just for the...
No, no. 127,000 is charged to business unit 1505, which is part of a 420,000 business unit. The Jennifer Lynn is charged to a separate business unit. Chief Cook is charged to a separate business... Right, so it's like, I just want to clarify the way the accounting works by business unit within that line item.
Are you done for now? Okay. So next is Councilmember Burns, followed by Nusma.
I'm just trying to... So is ARPA part of... If ARPA expenditures part of how we went over budget as well?
Right here, so if you see the item number...
So why is ARPA included as a general fund? I thought ARPA was its own fund, not in the general fund.
It is a separate fund.
It is a separate fund.
You see the fund, number seven, 170, is the ARPA fund.
But you still include this in the city going over or the city staff going over budget, even though it's a separate fund, different funding source?
Yes, we don't have to do just for general fund. We have to do for all funds because city council approves the expenditure by each fund. When you approve the budget, it is expenditure for each fund. So we found these funds and said, okay, let's do the budget amendment for those funds.
It's just confusing because, I mean, the ARPA discussion, because it was a whole separate source, you know, I don't think...
I mean, this is the...
I don't think there's anything that was spent that we didn't approve and discuss. So it's just, it makes it a bit confusing to add that to it. But in terms of, you said between debt service and I think ARPA, that makes up 80%?
Yes.
If you were to include what you mentioned about pensions, what percentage would...
I mean, even if I include pension, then it's pretty much 90%.
Okay, so what's everything else?
You see general fund, and even for general fund, I think we have shared the explanation with you that what were the line items, you know? That and some of the line items, like we mentioned, I think it's in the second line.
Is business services that you just talked about a part of that 10%?
Right, the CMO business unit and some of those things I mentioned.
So business service, the Health and Human Services Department, I think is part of that 10%. What else besides those two?
One of those things with the Health Department. And I think I could say that, okay, we spent this money. Then why am I over? I said, we got that money back. Yes, that money is sitting in the revenue side. We cannot net the expenses against revenue.
Okay. Are there any other big ones in that 10%? I know we talked about Health and Human Services, CMO, anything else?
No.
Okay.
I mean, these are the two big items to my mind, ARPA and what do you call, the debt service, you know?
Yeah, both of those, again, I think is somewhat misleading to include it in this way. But thank you, okay. And not misleading on staff's part, it's just confusing for folks to interpret.
Right, unfortunately, I have to do that.
Yeah, no, I understand. Yep, yep.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to share my thought process when looking at these numbers. And I come to some different conclusions and some of the same conclusions. But Hitesh, if you could go, I think it's on the next slide here.
Let's see. Maybe it was the previous one. Where you show all 38 items. Page 444, or four of eight.
Oh, this is the presentation I have. But if you are looking at... These are some of the funds. I can go to the other funds. If you are comparing the budget, it was...
What I'm looking for is the big picture, the total budget, which shows that we came in on a budget of $296 million. We came in $30 million under budget. All right, it's page...
Right here it says, yes.
Next slide?
Next one.
Page 444.
It's page 445.
There we go. So that's the one I want to look at first. And when I see we have a 30, like say, $300 million budget roughly, and we came in overall $30 million under budget, like 10% under budget, like that's the main number I'm looking at. And that's, that's good, right? We came in 10% under budget. No one's going to complain about that. And, you know, maybe we should congratulate ourselves for our exemplary fiscal restraint in coming in 10% under budget.
Thank you.
Let's also acknowledge that there are 38 lines on this budget. And I'm not blessed with perfect foresight. No one in this room is blessed with perfect foresight. And a budget is only an expectation of an amount of money you plan to spend. Over the course of a year, it's entirely reasonable and not in any indication of poor planning that for some of these, we may end up coming in over budget. It's just a projection of expected future costs. We don't know exactly what the future is going to be, was going to, is going to hold. So of these 38 lines, nine of them actually came in over budget. So still, that seems pretty good, right? We could say we want them all to come in over budget or under budget. But what would that mean practically? Is that we would have to be even more conservative in budgeting and pass the burden of funding an inflated budget along to, onto taxpayers to have enough money so that we would come in under budget on every single line item. That's not something we want to do. We want to make our best effort at getting where we need to get. And I think we did a pretty good job. However, it's the council's, you know, right and responsibility to take a look at where we did go over budget and see if there's something that we did wrong, see if there's lessons we can learn, see if there's something we need to do better. So let's go back to that two other pages where we look at these nine over-budget items. And so you've explained that ARPA were $4.8 million over budget. But let's also point out that we are 23... Let me do some 43 million, 21 and a half million dollars over budget on our ARPA revenue side because we didn't know about ARPA.
So it's right here. This is what you're talking about.
Right.
Second line item.
Right, so that wipes out almost half of this $11 million. Then the debt service, that's 3.8. Like, that's another accounting, like a relic of the accounting system. So if it really comes right down to it, we're doing a pretty darn good job of tracking our expenses or of controlling our expenses to budget. You know, where we, I think, should focus our effort is, you know, looking at the $1.9 million that were over budget for the general fund. Like, that's worthy of looking into. And that's, if we want to have that conversation tonight, great. So I look at these numbers and I don't come to... The conclusion I come to is that we're doing pretty good. We're doing a pretty good job managing the finances here in town. I'm also concluding that we can... We have an opportunity to keep the council better informed on a regular basis moving forward so that we're not caught off guard by these numbers at the second meeting in April every year. And this is a topic that we are in the process of discussing at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting. We're going to be talking about developing a regular report, which is what Councilmember Kelly is asking for, that... So we can track in a closer to real-time basis what the trends are. And so we're not, we're not taken off guard in April.
Absolutely, I agree with that. And I think I will remind again, some of them might, you know, that we submit monthly financials to the city council. And I require to do that under the statute, and which is posted on our city website. It is part of the Friday packet. So, I mean, like suppose if you look at our November report, you would have some idea about how we're doing in general fund, how we are doing in other funds, you know? I mean, there are some entries, yes, sometimes no overtime and that's kind of a big variable in general fund. But other than that, most times, you know, it would be kind of same trend which we see all the way until November. And yes, and that's the one thing. I mean, if the city council wants me to discuss that, even after I send it, that it says, let's talk about some of those things, highlights, lowlights, and what's the future holds.
Right. It's also important to realize if we are significantly under budget on a particular item, we have an opportunity maybe to reallocate that money somewhere where there are other priorities, right? So it's not just being over budget that we need to track. It's under budget and, you know, on an ongoing basis, balance our needs and our priorities. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilmember Hatakari's?
Yeah, I think, you know, a lot of the other council members have good points about kind of the clarity of the accounting. A lot of us are not accountants. And I think it'd be really helpful in the reports to have just a special note of things like the police pension fund, which, you know, it's a negative line item thing that we can't do anything about. It just is what it is. And I think that would, you know, lend a lot of clarity when those things comes up so that, you know, when constituents are looking at it, they don't, they know like, oh, this is, you know, what this means. So I think that'd be great.
Yep.
Since no one who has not yet spoken is requesting to speak, we'll go back to Councilmember Reed with two minutes left.
Thank you. One, I want to note, there are a lot of positives about our budget. I mean, being 30 million, 10% under is great. But again, it's just a happenstance. And I would project, given inflation, if we're worried about if we're 10% under in 2021, what are we going to be over in 2022, given the increasing cost of all kinds of things? And so to the point of items that were not approved by council, to Councilmember Kelly's point, there's $98,000 payout that was not approved by this council and from my knowledge was not approved on the bill's list. There is a $189,000 payout that was not approved by this council on the bill's list, from my knowledge. If somebody, if I'm wrong, someone please correct me. Overtime in the fire department went over by $231,000. Our firefighters are great. I am glad that we have them. I support them. This is money well spent. But should we have controls on our budget where if the fire department sees that they are going over, nearing going over budget by, you know, whatever, that they come to the council and seek a budget amendment? And Public Works Department went over by $221,000. Again, should that department see, hey, it looks like we're going over budget? Because it's not like the overtime just drops on our lap out of nowhere and all of a sudden there's a $231,000 expense. This is something you can very clearly see coming down the road. And then building maintenance, $175,000 there and increased costs for materials. And again, all of these things are things that I think this council would see as important. I don't think these are things that we approved. Again, if I am incorrect about us approving it, please, someone correct me. But I think we just have to have better controls and our staff should have, we should have the expectation the expectation that if, if you see that you're going over in a department, that you come and you let the council know, and you ask for permission to go over. In any other business, in a private business, this would not be acceptable. It looks like my time is running out, so I have one question for Mayor Biss. In the state of Illinois, if a department went over, you, you're former state senator, if a department went over by $100,000, what would happen to that department head? Would they be allowed to go over?
Here's what I will, that, I believe the question, and you're right, your time's up, I believe the question as you asked it is really up to the managerial discretion of the governor, and as you know, I did not become the governor, so it's, that's beyond my pay grade. But what I can say relative, relevant to this conversation, is that if a particular expenditure is under the total number authorized by the legislature, but still exceeds a particular, particular authority to spend out of a particular fund, the controller, if directed by the governor's team to cut that check, would not do it, right? The check does not get cut at the state if it's outside the explicit budgetary authority, even if there's a good reason, even if it, if it could be found in other funds. This relatively limited unilateral authority to transfer money from fund to fund for the purposes of things like this without the permission of legislature, but it's delineated clearly in state law and is, and is pretty limited.
And if I can say one thing for five seconds, I don't think the state of Illinois is our, you know, to be held on a fiscal pedestal, but because of all of the problems with the state of Illinois, I think they've put in place some really good controls and, and practices to ensure that there's tight financial constraints and that it's very clear, transparent process. Thank you.
With two and a half minutes left, Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I just feel, of course, we're going to, you know, end up approving this, but I would, I would very much like to just hold this for one council meeting, so that staff can come back with a plan to, you know, to, for tracking, to apprise us, so that when we are voting, we have a sense if we're going over budget, so that we can make appropriate decisions. I think, you know, for ourselves, for clarity, for the public, for transparency, and in the name of budgetary discipline, I just think for us, as we make our decisions on how we want to spend our money, I would just like to hold it for one session, so that you can come back and let us know going forward how we can be kept apprised.
So Councilmember Kelly moves to hold, was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Councilmember Kelly moves to hold item F1, is there a second? The motion dies for lack. All right, Councilmember Kelly moves to hold item F1, Councilmember Reed seconds. So let me make sure I have this right, Mr. Cummings, the, the item is therefore held unless there's a motion to overturn the hold, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion to overturn the hold?
Do you want to move it?
I'll have the motion overturned.
Hold on. And I'll also second.
Well, I'll say my, have my question during the.
All right, so Councilmember Nusma moves to overturn the hold, Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Now, is there any discussion on the motion to over, is the, hold on one second, Mr. Cummings, the motion to overturn the hold is a debatable motion, right?
Yes.
All right, so is there any discussion to, on the motion to overturn the hold? Yes, everyone's light is on.
Boy, I was first.
You, I think you actually were first, so we're going to go, we're going to go Burns, Nusma, Revel, Reed.
Just a quick question about this, if we hold this, does it really matter at this point?
I mean, it could potentially delay our audit, I mean, I'll have to check with the auditors, I mean, they look at it, they're, okay, we have those kind of.
But your tone and body language suggests that this is not a big, you know, it might, some far-off chance it could be, but it likely is not an issue.
Right, I mean, I'll have to check with them.
This money was already spent, I just want to, you know, don't make this the thing that carries us 45 minutes, you know, or whatever, like, this is not a big deal, we could hold this, and, and it's not going to make a big difference, so.
And if, if I could just say something, if Hitesh walks away, makes a phone call tomorrow morning, finds out that a delay is really problematic, we could come back in two weeks and do introduction and action on the same night, and then be on the same calendar we would have been on before. All right, so, but I don't think people are taking your advice, Councilmember, so next we have Councilmember Nusma, who will be followed by Revel, then Reed, then Braithwaite, then Hatares, and then Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate and understand and approve of Councilmember Kelly's intent to, you know, develop a, a system of periodic reports to council. I really think we need to do that, that's something we're, we've decided to undertake at the Finance and Budget Committee Meeting. I don't think we are going to get there within two weeks, you know, within two, three weeks of our next council meeting. I'd like that conversation to take as long as it needs to take, that might be a month, that might be six weeks, you know, maybe we'll approve something at the Finance and Budget Committee Meeting in, in June. So I don't see the, the need to delay acting on this ordinance right now. I'm not suggesting we don't need to, you know, take our time and, and look at the financial reports, however, so I just don't see that, that delaying the vote on this really accomplishes anything.
So next is Councilmember Revel, who will be followed by Reed, Braithwaite, Hatares, and Kelly.
I, Councilmember Nusma basically said what I was planning to say.
Councilmember Reed.
Does my time start over?
Yes, here, everyone, everyone got a refresh for this.
Okay. I'll, I'll just very quickly reiterate that I think, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Nusma is holding this, going to be some, you know, are we going to, at the end of this road, have, you know, everything done and, you know, be enlightened and have a new process? No. But also, it doesn't seem like there's going to be a harm, and allowing a council member to have a great opportunity to get more information when there's no harm, I think, is worth it. And so with that, I hope we can just allow the hold to stand, and I think we should start looking at overturning holds as a, you know, in a situation where something is dire and not just, you know, in the way that we're looking at it now. And I hope, I'll make one last point, I hope that wisdom of the committee thing stands in the future, that if a committee supports something, you'll follow the wisdom of a committee. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
No comment, I'm ready to vote.
Councilmember Hatares.
My comment is, I just think, like, a lot of this is, this is important to just update our budget now, it's, it is what it is, it's water under the bridge, and I'd really like to see some of the changes that other council members suggested tonight going forward.
Councilmember Kelly.
Just to reiterate, I, I think it's important, just for staff to come back with, whether it's a commitment, I think there is some minimal, minimal steps that can be taken, and I think there's plenty of time between now and the next council meeting to bring back some of those assurances, so that we are properly apprised, so that we, as the representatives and the stewards of, of our budget and our tax dollar are properly apprised. Again, it wasn't 100,000, we're talking 11.5 million, so I do think it's important that we have this, I think it's important that the public knows that we're all committed to that also. So that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying we're not to pass it, but I'm just saying that I think this is important that we, that we hold it, so that we have that, and the public knows that we are very serious about, you know, budgetary discipline regarding our tax dollars. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to overturn the hold on item F1? Councilmember Braithwaite.
Yes.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
No.
Councilmember Sufferton.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Hatares.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. Five voting in favor and three voting against, the motion fails for lack of a two-thirds vote, and therefore the hold stands, and item F1 will be on the agenda on.
No, that's not correct.
Yeah?
We voted to overturn.
Overturn.
Doesn't overturn need a two-thirds vote?
That, that's correct, it needs a two-thirds vote.
Yeah. So the motion fails for lack of two-thirds, five is not two-thirds of eight. And so the hold stands, and the item will be on the May 9th City Council Agenda. This brings us to call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Braithwaite.
No report.
Councilmember Nusma.
I just wanted to express my condolences to the family of Adam Abayian. I didn't know him personally, but by all accounts, he was a well-loved member of, of city staff, and will be missed by the people he worked with. Ward meeting, fourth ward meeting coming up Tuesday, May 3rd, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown. And I just reiterate in what the mayor said during his announcements, the first meeting of the redistricting committee will be Tuesday, May 10th, 7:00 PM here at the Civic Center. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
So fifth ward meeting on April 28th at 7:00 PM, we'll be getting the newsletter out tomorrow, likely, we're going to be discussing an important update regarding Haven Middle Schools' culture and climate with guest speaker Dr. Devon Horton, Superintendent of Evanston Skokie School District 65. We're going to have an update regarding property tax exemptions and appeal schedule with the Mitzi Gibbs, the city's property tax assessment reviewer, and then Kenneth Cherry, Recreation Manager for Fleetwood Jordaine, is going to walk us through the 2022 summer camp announcements citywide. And, and also would like to express my condolences for Adam Abayian. I think that is, yes, that is all, thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton. Councilmember Revel.
Just to mention that I'm having a meeting at the Ecology Center this Thursday evening, 7:00 PM. It's a community briefing about the rebuilding of the Lincoln Street Bridge, which is not happening tomorrow, but it's, our, planning is already getting underway, and we're looking for input from residents about how they use the bridge now and what they would like to see in the, in the new bridge.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, I just want to announce that our eighth ward, monthly ward night, will be this Thursday, the last Thursday of the month, at 6:00 PM. We'll have Evanston Grows speaking, and Evanston Grows is an organization that partners with Evanston residents to address issues of food insecurity, health equity, workforce development, and working collectively with our community to grow and give away food, and so we're looking forward to having them, as well as discussing other issues, as well as discussing the truck route in the eighth ward and other issues that are important to eighth warders. Look forward to that meeting, and I will also share my condolences with the Abayian family, and, you know, say thank you to Adam Abayian for his leadership on our lakefront for, I believe, over 20 some-odd years, maybe 25 years, so thank you to Adam and his family for, for giving him to us and providing such a great service for the city of Evanston. Thank you.
Councilmember Hatares.
We will have a ninth ward, ward, ward meeting on May 5th at 7 o'clock, it will still be virtual, it will be en inglés y en español, and look for the newsletter later this week.
Councilmember Kelly.
Also, my deepest sympathy to Adam's wife and family, we really, we've been so lucky to have had Adam for all these years, for 25 years, he was, he was passionate about our lakefront, he knew our lakefront more than anybody, even just until recently, he was thinking about our lakefront and the programs on our lakefront, and just cared more than anything that it carried on successfully. He was called, he would get called across the country to other communities to help with safety plans and manuals, and anyway, this was his passion, and we were so lucky to have him, and he will be dearly missed. Thank you.
And with that, Councilmember Nusma is recognized for her motion.
Which item? Is it personnel? It's a couple. Personnel and litigation. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel and litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in five ILCS 120/2A, Sections C1 and C11.
Second. Councilmember Nusma moves that the city council resolves itself into an executive session, Councilmember Reed seconds, is there any discussion, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Councilmember Braithwaite, Councilmember Nusma, Councilmember Burns, Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hatares.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes, and at 9:24 PM, the city council resolves into an executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.